Yeah, I've seen Manona do it in their city council meetings.
Well, it's maybe for the Fourth of July or the meeting around the Fourth of July. We could, we could do it then.
It will need a minor break in probably 20 minutes just because the last meeting didn't give me a chance to break.
Gotcha.
I think we're ready.
All right. Cool. Are we, are we live on YouTube? Can we start the meeting or?
You can go whenever you're ready.
All right, cool. Need a gavel too. I will call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, June 8th at 7:03 PM. We will begin with the role.
Alder Person Cronin?
Present.
Alder Person Journey?
Present.
Alder Person Kemp?
Here.
Alder Person Cole?
Here.
Alder Person Posey?
Here.
Alder Person Ricky?
Here.
Alder Person Ryan?
Here.
Alder Person Touche?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Next, we will move on to public items three, which is public comment. I understand we have at least keep a couple of people from the public wish to speak, Mr. Stair.
So first up, we have Nat Long. Let me promote here. Hold on one second.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Hey, it's all yours.
Oh, okay. Hello, everyone. Thanks for letting me speak today. My name's Nat Long and I've been a Verona resident for 16 years and I'm currently a college student. First off, I'd like to say that I'm here as a white advocate for the Black Lives Matter movement and a strong supporter of this movement. My only aim is to highlight and amplify black voices and advocate for them, and I never want to overshadow their struggles or make the narrative about me, just to preface. I first want to say that I think that Verona needs to make a statement to the entire community voicing our support of black lives and that those students, citizens, and families in our community who are of color are welcome, safe, and appreciated within our city. While, let's face it, Verona is a predominantly white community, our city needs to be on the correct side of history and advocate for black lives instead of being complacent with regards to systemic racism and violence. As Angela Johnson said at a webinar I attended recently with black activists from all over the country, this is a moment for transformation, not small reforms. And we as a city have the power to not only make change but raise awareness of racism and prejudice and make everyone feel welcomed and safe in this town. Here are a list of just a few suggestions I want to ask the council to consider as we move forward in solidarity. First one is issuing a statement regarding Verona's support of the movement and posting it to the top of the city's website, not only so residents of other towns see our support, but that's so that our black residents feel like this is their city too. The second is evaluate our police department. Take a critical eye to their responsibility, necessity of forced policing, and potentially even defunding the department and focusing on community-led safety programs like what was done in Minneapolis recently. Again, just because you condemn a knee to the neck does not mean you are not responsible for microaggressions and other forms of violence. Taking the police, the third thing is taking the police out of Verona High School, Badger Ridge Middle School, and other Verona schools to help black students feel safe, untargeted, and like their school is not a place where they need to be afraid. Consider replacing said officers with security, teacher monitors, or other support staff. Fourth is encourage the Verona Area School District to implement a racism education program as a part of faculty and staff training. Next is donating to organizations such as Urban Triage and Freedom, Inc. in the city's name to show our siblings in Madison that we stand with them. Encouraging local businesses to voice their support for the movement, whether that be through their social media platforms, hanging signs in the window, etc., should they choose to stand. Posting links on the city's Facebook, website, and other platforms for donation and education. And the last thing is working with the library to host a Black Authors Week that connects our, to our solidarity with the movement. These are simple and effective ways that Verona city officials, businesses, and residents can show our support and that Hometown USA is a place for all, where we stand up for what's right. Many of us in the city are privileged to get to learn about racism and not experience it, absolutely myself included. So let's use our privilege to lift others up. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Do we have another speaker, Mr. Stair?
Now, I want to put you back in the audience, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, next up is Jesse Charles.
Hi, Adam, can you see me?
Yes, we can hear you and see you.
Oh, that's a little scary because everything was going fine there. Right when you said my name, it all went black, but cool. Thank you. We're back. Hey Evan, I clocked this at three minutes. If you need to take that break now, you've got three minutes. Just FYI. I want to throw that there. So, cool. Well, well, okay, three minutes and five seconds now. But hi, everybody. I just wanted to introduce myself to you and thank you for your time tonight. I'm Jesse Charles. I am president of the Verona Area Historical Society. I'd like to say a few brief words on behalf of our historical society and myself as a longtime resident about the 103-year-old New Century School Building, or as it was known for many generations, the Verona Grade in School. I'd like to first say thank you to everyone at the city, especially the CDA, city staff, and the developers involved in this, in, for keeping the preservation of this building at the forefront of this process. We all agree that this building represents an irreplaceable piece of our culture that goes back many generations. It can be a scary thing to see such an important treasure leave the public domain and enter private hands, and we are very thankful that all parties involved understand the value of this school. I know that you all received our letter with two specific recommendations, but I wanted to put a face on that letter and also make myself available for questions tonight, should they come up, about the building, why it's so important, about the National Register of Historic Places. Just to summarize, the first recommendation is that a deed restriction be placed on the building before it changes hands. I've enjoyed getting to learn about these developers through Zoom and YouTube over the last month. I don't doubt they'll take good care of it. But in the event that the building changes hands again in the future, a deed restriction will guarantee that any future private owner will also respect it and will not demolish it. In 2016, the Common Council did this with the Matt's House, and it was a great decision. The second recommendation is for the council to request today that the developer chosen will commit to placing the building on the National Register of Historic Places. Both developers reacted favorably to the register when Mayor Diaz brought it up last week at the CDA. If you're curious, I can provide details on how the building was deemed likely eligible since we helped with that process. What this will require of the developer to do is to fill out an application and a write-up. Consultants can do this. The cheapest one I found was just around $2,000. It's important to point out that there's no preservation ordinance in Verona, meaning you can list a building in Verona on the register and demolish it the next day. Gasp. So that's not what this is about. But committing to keep it on the register means that certain aspects of the historic integrity that are still present today need to be kept around, most notably the exterior, possibly the entry hallways and common areas. So currently in Verona, it would be an honor system. I've also learned that Wisconsin, and Steph can obviously validate, verify this, I learned that Wisconsin requires cities that have buildings on the register to draft a preservation ordinance, but it's entirely up to you what you put in that. So the main point I want to make is that the register listing would be a point of pride for Verona, not a way to protect the building. That's what the deed restriction is for. It would, it would just be a great show of faith for both of the developers tonight to commit to doing this. And just thank you again for your time and all the care you've been taking with this process. I'll stay on the Zoom call tonight. So please let me know if I can answer questions or if our historical society can assist with this process. And obviously, we look forward to working with, with whichever of the developers is chosen. So thank you all very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
What's that?
I want to put you back in the audience.
Okay, see you.
Were there any more public comments?
That was it.
Okay. I was glad to see, to see someone come out. We're trying to make, make the best of the situation with between Zoom and preventing our meetings from being interrupted. Obviously, in person is a lot easier because you can just, we just have a podium and you just sign in and you can talk. And I prefer that, but we're all trying to do our best in the pandemic. But anyways, with that, we will move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the May 26, 2020 Common Council Meeting. Questions, comments? Motions?
Overapproval.
Motion by Alder Touche is there, second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole. Last chance for corrections to the minutes. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the May 26, 2020 Common Council Meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to item five, which is a mayor's business, and we have a presentation by Chief Cofflin regarding the City of Verona Police Data Procedures and Accountability. I understand Mr. Stair is going to appoint him or move him up, I believe. But while he's doing that, I just want to say, I think, I think we're all shocked by what we saw in, in Minneapolis. And I think, you know, I, I don't want to fall into that cliche of, you know, it can never happen here, even though that, that is kind, kind of what I think, but I believe in transparency and I believe in addressing problems head-on. And I don't believe in, you know, hiding from anything and, and, you know, I think, you know, we probably all have work to do and how we can improve ourselves and, 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 you know, be welcoming to all sorts of different kinds of people. But, you know, based on some of the feedback I've gotten from the public, I think, I think this was just a good thing to do, and I think, I think Chief Cofflin is doing a very good job as the police chief, and, and I appreciate him kind of explaining things and talking about things. And if, you know, there's problems, we'll address them. You know, that's all we can do. But anyways, Chief Cofflin?
Thank you. Thanks for inviting me tonight and thanks for listening and, and for your support. Adam, you're gonna advance through and, and locate a few documents for the audience. If, if you would start by just listing under number one, Adam, the Dane County Chiefs of Police Statement, so. The audience there, you'll see that was the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association, of which I am a member. And signing onto this particular document, provided a statement to our community on May 28th about the George Floyd case. As, as, as the mayor indicated, I'm not here tonight to speak at length about the George Floyd case, but it is in response to the George Floyd case and many questions that have come about as a result of questions, concerns, and I guess directed to the police department that, that tonight we hope to provide some answers to and direction, and I'm hopeful that, that our information shared is, is straightforward and going to be helpful. So just a long and short, a statement that I provided last week to the Verona press, my response personally to the viewing of the video of the George Floyd incident was, it was troubling and difficult to watch. And I know there's many more emotions that go into it than that, but it, I think it was hard for, for everyone to see. So bear with me as we move on to our next item, which I'm going to share with you. It is about statistics related to the City of Verona Police Department. So a bit of a backdrop here, the Verona Police Department is a member of a records management consortium called the Multi-Jurisdictional Public Safety Information Systems. And our partners are Fitchburg, Middleton, Manona, and Sun Curry. So the all five of us agencies collect the data in which I'm about to share with you. And so Adam, if you would post 2017 data labeled VEPD RSE 2017 new. Okay. So we're just going to go through, I have three years worth of data here, 2017, 18, and 19, just to illustrate some statistics that, that I hope are going to be helpful about Verona Police Department's enforcement efforts. So on, on page one, you'll see first about a third of the way down on the right, 2017 by ethnicity. I just want to point out a couple of things here. And, and all, everything which I'm about to point out will apply to all three years worth of data. So I have a six-page document for 17, a six-page document for 18, and so on for 19. So under ethnicity, you will see that Hispanic is not a race. It's actually an ethnicity based on federal guidelines, and that's why it's listed there separately. Ethnicity is based upon how one identifies and is included under all of the below-race categories. The other category generally is for those who refuse to identify a particular race and/or the officer is unable to identify a primary race. And then you'll see the, so, so as you look at that particular data, it's broken down into sex, male and female, and the percentages. So for example, as you, as you follow along, you'll see under females, for the City of Verona, our, our population makeup of females is 53.9%. But for City of Verona Police Department, physical arrest data, they make up 22.2%. And of course, then to the right, or further to the right in those columns, you'll see male is, is more so the reverse of that, of males make up 46.1% of the City of Verona's population and 77.8% of, of the arrest. And so, so then the next section down is, is by race, and again, ethnicity. So Latino would be included in one of the five categories below Asian, Black, Native, White, or Other. And there are the percentages listed there as well. So you'll, you'll see on the bottom, under Asian, city is 2.9%. Under Black, the city population makeup is 3.1, and, and so on. Thank you, Adam. And something to, to point out here with the 2017 data, you'll see under offenses charged. Let's see. Yeah, under the offenses charged with, back in 20, in, in 2017, you're, you're only seeing the single primary charge of the most serious. So for example, for disorderly conduct, that, that line across the top of quarter one, two, three, and four, it's possible that an individual was arrested for disorderly conduct and potentially say burglary. Well, burglary is a more serious charge or violation than disorderly conduct, so they would only be listed as a, as burglary, not disorderly conduct as well. Okay? You'll, you'll see then when you, okay, as well on the 2017 call origination, this is an important point to, to make out on the, on the left-hand side of the document. Under 2017 call origination, you'll see offer initia, officer initiated, citizen initiated, and other. And the reason I want to point this out is because in 2017, this data was much more accurate for us in our records management consortium because the software that we used differentiated between an officer initiated and other. And you can see, and for example, for physical arrest for that call origination, that more than double of those calls for service were originated, originated by citizens, not the police. That's the distinction I want to make there. That will change in 2018 and 19, and I'll explain that when we get there. So if you'd scroll the page, oh, also two under, on the bottom left there in the top five home cities. What we, we track there is the address of those individuals that we arrested. So you'll see across the board and all, every year, you will see Verona, Madison, and Fitchburg are our top three residences of those in which we arrest or have the most contacts with. Now below that, you see Middleton, Belleville, and others, and those will fluctuate depending on the particular year and the data set. But the three common themes are a vast majority of our contacts are for citizens from Verona, Madison, and Fitchburg. Okay? And then the disclaimer, I guess, the, the footnotes on, on the, on the bottom with the two asterisks, population estimates are supplied by US Census. So that's the data that, that, that we had available could collect. So please advance to page two, and you'll see traffic citations are counted here. And, and the thing to note there is each of them count individual citations issued unlike arrests. So for an arrest in the previous page, an individual may have been arrested once but charged for three violations. And you're only counting the one most serious violation. For traffic citations, they're all counted individually. Someone may have been stopped once, but cited twice. So both of those citations are counted and appear here. So just a distinction to make. And, and then the same data is collected for traffic citations, again, by sex, by race. And then if you'll scroll down with me, continue a little further in the same information, the call origination and the top 15 offenses here. We go a little deeper, a little more into detail there because traffic, obviously, are higher volume numbers in a variety of offenses. But you will see by and far the top two for every year are exceeding speed limits and failure to wear seat belts. Speeding is just a very common violation and issue in, in our society today. And operating without a seat belt is probably the more common traffic-related grant that we specifically look for in trying to ensure seatbelt compliance and an increased wearing of the seat belts. So the cities again are the same. You'll see Verona, Madison, and Fitchburg, as I previously mentioned, you'll see that in, in every bit of data that we collect, and then you'll notice how those particular cities below there change a bit, and they will, they'll fluctuate based on, you know, Mount Horv is listed here in Belleville. So that's, that, that'll fluctuate. So. And then if you go on to the next page, then here we get to warning citations, and that is warning citations are, generally speaking, are, are equipment-related violations where we seek compliance by issuing a citation that allows the individual that's been issued the ticket 10 days to comply, say for non-registration or a burnt-out headlight or taillight. Those are generally those types of violations, and the same data is collected by sex, by race, in the same categories. If you scroll down further on the page, the call origination and the top offenses are the same, and then again, the cities, you, you, you see the same there. So scroll on to the next page, please. And then we do the same for ordinance. So these are City of Verona ordinances. They're not crimes. They're similar to a municipal ordinance citation where state statutes are adopted for crimes, but the individual's not charged for a crime. It's an ordinance, is a, treated similarly to a traffic citation in which our municipal court handles these, and again, the same data is collected as, as the previous data sets. If you scroll down, please, to the bottom of the page, you'll see it's the same, same information collected as previous, and then on to the next page, please. And then we, we collect the data then by, for victims, and then the following page will collect it by suspects. And you'll see here, a, a couple of things to point out. By sex, you will see that a majority of crimes that are perpetrated are against female victims. And then when you scroll to the next page, you will see that by suspects, a majority of crimes that are committed are by males. And that is pretty consistent as well, across the data sets and years. So I don't know if you want to allow any interaction here or questions, or we want to do that later, but I, I want to, this could be quite a lengthy presentation, so I want to keep moving along, so I don't drag this out too far, but I, I want it to be helpful and useful, but I, but I, I want to pause here because I certainly want to be as transparent as we can be and answer questions if people have them. Or you can have me proceed and we can accumulate questions later. It's up to you.
Well, let's check in with the council. Any others have any questions so far? Alder Kemp? And then Alder Ryan?
Thank you. Thank you, chief. I appreciate you taking the time to be here with us today, and I appreciate you putting these, these statistics together for us. I think it's important for us to be informed of our community. I know, you know, personally, I know that we have a, a good, good staff at the police department. I'm confident in the leadership here. Um, I, you know, I had a conversation with you after, after the incident in Minneapolis, so I, I fully support the police department that we have here. I do have one question about some of the statistics. It looks like the numbers with respect to African-American males, the highest incidence is between the age group of 15 and 19. Can I take that to mean that the majority of the issues are are at the high school?
That's a large percentage of them, yes. And, and the other thing that you can take from that, now, I don't have the 2016 data in front of me, but the reason that this jumps out at me is because in the past, Mayor Diaz and I have had this exchange of information, is that I, I believe it's 2016 data, but what's, what's interesting about that as well is in 2016, we issued, I believe it was 56 or 59 citations to high school students during that year. And all but one of them, all but one incident was actually reported by somebody other than the police. So only one was initiated by the police department. So, so that's why I wanted to make that distinction and point that out about that data set with the call origination, because to me, it's very important. A lot of times we'll have a discussion about how you have contact with individuals, say, a student, and in fact, most of it is reactionary in response to a call from a staff member, a call from a citizen, a witness, a parent, or, or, you know, a third party in his, in, excuse me, an institution. That will change though, as we move forward with that data, and unfortunately- That will change though, as we move forward with that data, and unfortunately, you're going to see in 18 and 19, we lost the ability to track that because of our reliance on Dane County, and I'll share that information with you a little more detail, but but yes, majority of our interaction with black youth are related directly to the high school. And I and I think generally speaking, when you look at the data of our population, that just jumps out at you. When you say our our population, black population period is is 3%, well, most of our inter- interaction are of students of color are at the high school where the population is a higher percentage than our city of population, that's a factor for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
I had Alder Ryan next.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief Coulson, for being here tonight. I actually have four questions, and if I need to be cut off, feel free. If I could just interject, I did want to give a word of gratitude to to the young lady who spoke at the beginning, Natalie or Nat. Terrific, thank you. I did want to, I I want to encourage more civic engagement, and I would love to see more people participating. So thank you, Nat, very, very appreciated. Chief Coulson, I I did want to say thank you for being here tonight, and also thank you, I read your comments in your interview that you did on in the Verona Press. I read that over the weekend, and I appreciated your comments there. My first question actually relates to something that Nat raised, so my wife is a teacher at the high school. And as I understand it, we do have an SRO, there are school resources officer, which is which is another word, another term for a police officer, correct?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. As I understand it, the Madison Teachers Union has called for the removal of SROs from their schools in favor of more counselors, psychologists, social workers, mental health specialists, I'm just curious. Well, and actually also, as I understand it, both this current year and next year, we've got security guards at the school, I think next year we're going to have a total of six. And so I guess my question is, where do you see, you know, what do you see the role of SRO next year in our schools, either the high school or elsewhere, if we have the six security officers? And then what what are your feelings about the idea of removing the SRO from the schools?
Are you there? Okay, thanks for the question. So we're City Administrator Sarah, myself and Mayor Diaz have had some preliminary conversations about we we use a different, slightly different acronym, instead of SRO, we we call it the PSL, the Police School Liaison, essentially the same thing. We've had a long partnership with the school, but as of the last several years, we've we've been utilizing a one-year contract, intergovernmental agreement. And that agreement will expire the end of June, which it it generally does. So we're in the process of of negotiating a successor agreement. So it's kind of hard to talk to how how Madison's decision or any other parts in the country with their concerns or desires to remove the SROs or PSLs from the school will play out with with Verona area school district, that that is kind of yet to be determined. But part of your question was was what do I think of that idea? I haven't wavered on that, I I think that's a mistake and an error on on their part, and I think it's due to a variety of pressures. However, I respect the fact that there's that's their decision to make. There's no obligation for them to have that partnership with us and in and we follow the rules like like anybody else, if we don't want to have a partnership, I understand that. And we'll we'll continue to provide the best service we can like we would like we would for any other business in our community. We would take a a call or a request for service from the high school, and we would put it in our queue, we'd evaluate it and triage it like we would any other request and respond to it. The opportunity that is lost in in terminating that relationship is the ability to do any proactive work or educational type work, that is made much more difficult. And and we we like to do as much of that as we can, and we wish we could even do more. The unfortunate part is, is with one officer, it certainly has been over the years, the busiest position in our department. Just due to sheer volume, I mean, obviously, you're in a high school where they have, you know, a population of of a 15 to 1700 people, so clearly it's going to be quite busy for for one individual. Not to mention the different dynamics that are that come together there, where you have a variety of communities and different dynamics that contribute to disorder that occur at the high school. So that would be lost, the proactive and preventative part, and that would be unfortunate. But again, we we would carry on and continue to provide the best service we could regardless, like we do to any of our of our other schools.
Sure. That, thank you. I guess my next question is, is that officer, the PLO or the Police Liaison Officer, a uniformed officer, and are they armed while they're in the school?
Yes. Over the years, that 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 question surrounding that is has evolved as well from the traditional military style uniform that we wear with the blue pants and and blue dress shirt and in gear to an abbreviated version of that, to more of a relaxed style of cargo style pants and maybe a polo shirt. But yes, they continue to carry the same tools on on their belt, including a firearm. And we, that that has evolved over the years where it's gone from being a very visible position to to trying to reduce or minimize the visibility to an extent. And then back to trying to increase visibility again, and 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 a lot of the or recently, the changes to to increase visibility by driving a marked squad car and parking a marked squad car near the front of the school and ensuring that the officer was in a uniform really was more in response to the school violence, the the active threat and the active shooter incidents that have occurred across the country that statistics have have bared that that was much less likely to occur, a shooting or in a tragedy, if the individual shooter or shooters knew that a police officer was there marked by a marked squad and in a uniform. So it 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 has changed over the years, and and there have been discussions about that. But what what hasn't changed is that they're a sworn police officer with all the same duties and responsibilities as someone who is not assigned to the school. And it does include being armed as well.
Right, thank you.
Yes.
Moving on to the next question, so you might be aware that a number of communities right now are talking about the notion of a community oversight committee. And as I understand it, the the role of the committee would be to review complaints towards officers and have more community input. I don't know it to be true necessarily in the event of, in the case of the officer who murdered George Floyd, or officers plural, whether or not they had a long list of complaints against them. I guess my question, it's sort of a two-part question, one is just what is your thought about it? Or first of all, do you have an awareness of such a committee, what would be your thoughts about such a committee? And then secondarily, what currently is the process for, you know, review of of community complaints towards your officers?
I'm aware of the of of that request or movement, and it's it's not new. That was discussed in part of legislative initiatives in previous years, especially in the last, say, three to four years. I may have concerns about that, I have concerns about a citizen appointed committee that what their qualifications are, what their backgrounds are, and what the motives are to be part of that citizen panel and decision and oversight. And part of that concern is based on the current operating system that the state of Wisconsin has. So for the state, that citizen oversight committee currently is is comprised of a police and fire commission that is a five-member panel in Verona, which each commissioner is elected or appointed to a five-year term. And and I, and the reason being for the five-year term is because in time that those commissioners are appointed by different mayors over time, so there's an attempt to help reduce any any potential bias associated with any particular elected official. And because they're they're citizens of that particular community, in this case, Verona, there's a vested interest in the community. And really, the state of Wisconsin, in my experience over 29-year law enforcement career, is really the envy of of a lot of states in our nation. The Police and Fire Commission is governed under a state statute 62.13. And it's borne over the years, no system is perfect, but it's it's a pretty accurate and does a pretty good job to to handle basically the hiring, firing and of police and fire officials, police officers and firefighters in the state of Wisconsin, and and our commission is no different. The the complaint process, in addition, we have a citizen complaint process, so that's a start to to potential issue as well as our disciplinary policy. And so there's methods in place to handle officers who are performing below standard, those that are are actually committing violations of the law, and those that need to be removed by off from office. And and thus far for us, in my experience, that that has worked quite well, so. It's a quick thought, and I'll speak a little more about a few of those items a little later in presentation as well, so.
Sure, thank you very much. Let my last question is, all of us have inherent bias. I'm wondering what training is currently provided to your police force in terms of inherent bias and how to be aware and how to, you know, take corrective action, avoid issues of inherent bias?
So my my short answer to that is we we provide a fair amount of that training already and have, and will continue to. And I think overall, we've done a pretty good job of that, but there's always room for improvement. And I'm always considering and looking for additional training because especially in a in a field that police officer has to know a lot about a lot. And and the variety of what you deal with is is a challenge. So always open for additional and and hoping for more and hoping for the support to continue to provide more. I'd like to limit my response to that for now, because I have a whole section coming up about that training a little bit later in my presentation, and then maybe at the end, if I haven't answered your question, or you want more clarification, I'm totally open to doing that.
Is it something, is it something done annually or just as a one-off?
Both.
Okay.
Both of them. Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Sure, thank you.
Before I ask if there's any more questions, I want to make two quick points. While questions are totally good, we can't get into really a discussion on city policy, because it hasn't been properly noticed on the agenda. You know, so like, for example, asking a question about the PSL or about a citizen oversight board, totally great. But I would I would ask Alders not to weigh in for or against either way, because we haven't noticed it on the agenda. I feel like this is going to be kind of an ongoing conversation. And there will hopefully be a lot of a lot more time for dialogue and to to talk about the best way to do things. The second thing is I do see two hands up in the audience, unfortunately, we cannot take any public comments this time, because once again, it hasn't been noticed. In the agenda, I, this isn't like, like I said, this this, I would rather be doing this in person, because I feel like it's easier for people to participate and talk. But I don't know, as we said earlier, we we have to follow the rules and and, you know, we it wouldn't, it wouldn't be fair basically to to go off agenda and and kind of get on a topic that hadn't been properly noticed, because that would, you know, take away notice from the public. So sorry about that. I guess if I could, any other questions at this point in the presentation? Alder Cole?
I was gonna say, is this an appropriate time where we can take a break, or like, I just, I'm wondering, I might need to take a break.
Chief Coulson, where are we at?
I'm just getting started. Quite a ways to go, but you can cut it off at any point, I I really was trying to make an effort to, well, here, a quick explanation. Since the George Floyd incident, I've been inundated with questions. And they're tough questions, they're emotionally charged, they're they're appropriate. They're it's taken a lot of my time. And some would say it should, I I agree. But what I'm trying to do here tonight is provide a thorough response that's going to be more helpful than hurtful. And and then at the, hopefully at the conclusion of this, in conversation with City Administrator Sarah and Mayor Diaz, maybe post part of the presentation or a Q and A component on our site. Because a lot of the questions I've received have had common ground or common themes. And I I think it would be helpful to provide an answer, because I think half or three quarters of the battle here, maybe just it's an educational effort to 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 some, because they don't really have much contact with the police, which generally is a good thing, so. Quick, quick thought.
All right, how about maybe we can continue for about 10 more minutes, and then we'll take like a five-minute break and kind of, kind of run APM, does that work? Okay.
Okay, Adam, do you want to pull up the 2018 data? If you can, and then I'll just start talking to try to accelerate this a bit, so 2018 is you'll you'll see when you scroll down a little further on the page from physical arrest, keep scrolling down, and you'll get to the call origination. And you'll see here at the call origination, something that I pointed out in the 2017 data was, starting July 19th of 18, the Verona Police Department began using Tri-Tec CAD, which is computer aided dispatch, because we really didn't have a choice. The, we are dispatched through the Dane County Public Safety Communication Center, and that's the software that they use. And even though there's a lot of upside to doing that, and more upside than downside, one of the drawbacks for us and the step backward was we were no longer able to track the origination of the call, which was was tough for me and to 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 swallow, and we're still working on trying to make improvements to that. So the only way that we can track the call origination is to go into every single call of which we have roughly 15,000 a year and extract that, which is very time consuming. So we're we're working on continuing to do that, but you'll see, this is when those numbers start to change at the so if you look at the 2018 call origination, where it's officer initiated or citizen initiated, you'll see that's starting to flip there. So this data that we're going to go through the six pages, I'm going to accelerate through here, you can look at it at a future date. I'm not trying to hurry it, but it's it's consistent with what we've collected before, the same data sets. So if you move to 2019, Adam, you will see when you get to that that call origination, you'll see when you get there that it has flipped now. You'll see that call origination here is can you go to the top of the pages to see what data set we're at here? Are we still on, okay, we are in physical arrest yet, so scroll back down to the bottom, please. You'll see now that that isn't a big change, but if you go into maybe the next page, maybe it will there. You'll see it's about to change for us with citations are originally generally vast majority officer initiated, let's go to the next page to in the following page. You'll see where the the ordinance is, you'll see where that is where they'll start to to change from officer initiated now for, say, the From officer initiated now for say the, the fourth quarter. Is, you know, thirteen compared to citizen initiated at eight. I will guarantee you that that number is different if we went into each one of those. Twenty one calls plus the fifty two unknown. I'll guarantee you that a vast majority are initiated by. Someone other than the police. You have somebody calling for help. It's a victim. It's a teacher. It's a business or a witness. So to me, that's, that's a very important distinction, but right here, we're unable to collect that at this point. So. Data can be really helpful. We do our best to make it to be as transparent as possible, but it's, it's not everything. And, and this is a, a point that I wanted to emphasize. Okay, so if you. Um, Mr. Mayor, you stop me where, wherever you'd like to for, for, and I'm going to move along as quickly as I can until you say stop. Um, Adam, we want to move to section three, um, training. And if you want to pull up the, um, the first document there. Training, that general topic is, is uh one of five here I want to talk about tonight. Um, the State of Wisconsin Department of Justice Law Enforcement Training and Standards Bureau, that's a mouthful. Requires each officer to complete a minimum of twenty four hours of, of recertification training annually. So just to give you an idea, um, the city of Verona, we are part of. Um, of a um. One of five agencies in a training consortium. Where we complete this in-service training each year. Our partner agencies are McFarland, Manona, Oregon and Stoughton. Uh, together, we develop curriculum and share instructors to facilitate forty hours of training per year. Okay, the state requires twenty four, we do a minimum of forty. And, and most of this curriculum that of the forty hours is mandatory curriculum. Um, dictated by the state. Um, and you'll see our, I, I did the last five years of kind of a summary here. And you'll see how that changes. You'll see a couple of the locations, de-escalation techniques are highlighted there. So people have asked about de-escalation training. We incorporate de-escalation into. A vast majority of our in services. I'd like to say with, without fail, it's almost always an option. Um, de-escalation and we talk about other, we, we use classroom discussions, we do scenario based. We do Q and A, we use other um, community. Um, video or calls that went right and others that went wrong. We use those as examples and try to learn from them. So if you move then down, Adam, to specialized training on the next uh, um, document. So that's in-service training, that's forty hours per year for every sworn police officer in Verona. And then we do specialized training where we um, try to uh, on average. Each officer gets about forty additional hours of specialized training per year. So Charlie, to your, to your question earlier, um, the type of training, is it, is it uh ongoing? Is it um, um, one time? It's both in that sometimes we do here, what I highlighted was um. Um, just kind of more of those items that were. Topics of conversation over the course of the past ten days or so. De-escalation, use of force, implicit bias. Training, fair and impartial policing and crisis intervention, which is um, generally mental health related. And you can kind of see that's um. One-time trainings. We partner quite often with the city of Madison. And the Dane County Sheriff's Department because both of them have facilities in which they open up. Uh, training opportunities to others, generally speaking, um, they get preference to suburban. Or other Dane County communities. And it, 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 it's kind of a win-win scenario. It helps. Um, keep the cost down for us because we don't have to incur travel expenses. And for them, it helps offset the training that they would otherwise provide to their staff. So this is uh, an example of that type of training that we would attend. Um, now, this is not a complete list of trainings. This is just a snapshot of kind of those areas. Um, we also have in their various workshops, conferences, uh, things of that nature. And again, I'm, I'm a big. Supporter and proponent of training. Um, based on the complexity of the job, we can't get enough training. And obviously, we need more. That's, that's clear.
Uh, sorry, if I could stop you there, I'm gonna uh, uh, it is seven fifty-five, so I'm going to declare a five minute recess. Uh, so if any others need to use the uh bathroom, um, now would be the time to do so.
What if the police chief has to?
Uh, that's, I guess that's okay too. Thank you. We'll be back at eight. All right, so it's been about five minutes, but uh, uh, we'll give Chad and Evan uh, a few more minutes to get back. Well, all right, it's been like seven minutes. Uh, I assume uh, Evan will be back shortly. Uh. Uh, Chief Callum, uh, can you uh, continue?
Sure, thank you. So um, the last item under a training would be um, labeled DAT, Adam, if you would pull that up. So what I want to point out here is um, DAT is a acronym for Defense and Arrest Tactics. And I just, it's, I have a. The, the Defense and Arrest Tactics Manual provided by the State of Wisconsin is a one hundred ninety-nine page manual. That is what we teach officers in. Um, it's quite involved. I'm just going to review a few pages. Try to summarize this. Just take a first look at that conceptual basis of the DAT system, okay? Um, the DAT system is backed by two um, important concepts that guide Wisconsin law enforcement. Incident response and disturbance resolution. Okay, so Adam, if you would then scroll down to. I, uh, page nine of that section. Which would be the disturbance resolution, we'll just touch base on that for a little bit before moving on. It'll be page, and, and the bottom of that document, it'll say page nine, and the top it'll, it'll bold print all caps disturbance resolution. Right there. Okay, so the disturbance resol- could, could you minimize to try to get the entire page to, to be visible or not? I don't know if that's possible.
It's gonna be tough. People have a hard time seeing it online.
Good, okay, thank you. Good, good enough. So, so it has three main components of the disturbance resolution. Approach, approach considerations, intervention options and follow through considerations. And it's really designed to handle. Every scenario that law enforcement encounters. Y- y- you understand that, that, that's difficult for any model to do, but, but this is what we teach and train. And as you note in there and you, and you relate it to the. Floyd case, several things will jump out at you. One of the components to this. Um, a, a large component is follow through considerations. That's stabilizing. Monitoring or, or debriefing, searching, escort, transport, turnover too. So it, it's a, it's a comprehensive model to follow. It's the basis of. Our in-service training, it's the basis of our defense and arrest tactics training, and this is the model. That we follow and train in. Okay, so in moving on, Adam, to. The next item on the um, my outline accountability. Um, that was another common theme of questions and concerns that the community um, presented was if you would post the. Um, VPD mission, vision and values. So um, under accountability. Um, and I just want to quick review those with you. For, for us at the Verona Police Department, it starts with the mission. And our mission is, as you see it stated there, is to enhance a high quality of life striving to meet the expectations of our citizens. By providing fair, consistent and professional ce- police services to our community hometown USA. That's not a bunch of gobbledygook. That is who we are and that's what we strive to do every day. My vision is excellence in policing, a journey in partnership with the community. I'm a big community policing advocate. That's what I did my thesis on. It's near and dear to me. I'm a, um, um. I, I've, I've, I've read a lot of and really look up to um, Sir Robert Peel and is, and Peel's principles. That police are the community and the community are the police. Without each other and a reliance on each other, we go nowhere together. Um, the other is necessary. We're only as strong as the community that we work with and live in and serve and vice versa. And then our values and those values, you'll see a couple of uh, um, words in there that should jump out. Yeah, yeah, one is uh, accountability. Uh, being responsible to people we serve and our government governing body and to each other. And, and the others, equality, integrity, professionalism, excellence and teamwork. So those are the values that guide us. And then Adam, if you jump to the next document, the police oath, off, officers oath of honor. Every police officer, when they're certified in the law enforcement um, academy in the state of Wisconsin, takes this oath. And we have all taken it. And some of us have taken it multiple times. And some of our officers have taken it multiple times. And simply put, it's short and sweet. On my honor, I will never betray my profession, my integrity, my character or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always uphold the laws of my country, my community and agency I serve. That's a real good summary of who we are and what we stand for and, and the oath that we've taken. Next, I'll explain, uh, no document to support this, but policies and the um, eight can't wait. Um, campaign. So um. Two policies that, that handle a vast majority or all of, all of the items discussed. And the at eight can't wait campaign are our use of force policy and our code of conduct. Um, the eight recommendations of the eight can't wait are ban chokeholds and strangleholds. Require de-escalation, require warning before shooting. Exhaust all alternatives before shooting, duty to intervene. Ban shooting at moving vehicles, establish use of force continuum and require all force to be reported. And in summary, I'll say the Verona Police Department supports and conforms to all eight recommendations. And these are documented in our, in the two policies I mentioned. Use of force. And rules of conduct. And at, at any time, if you or any member of the public would like to further discuss those, I'm, I'm open to doing that. And open to viewing and, and open to. Critique and our suggestions. So. Moving along to my summary, which is I, what I, what I did was. I thought it would be beneficial to take a compilation of the questions that were presented to me. Um, that I responded to all last week. And share them with you and just reading and then sharing my answers. And I'll try to um, hurry that up. And if, uh, Mr. Mayor, if at any point you think that it's too long or unnecessary, you let me know. It's about a page and three quarters. So I'll step up the pace. Um, first question, how does this event and the fallout from it affect your ability to police in areas where? And by just a moment. I jumped ahead. Um, it's about two pages total. Have you seen the video of the Floyd case and what did you think of it? My answer was yes, it's troubling, it's difficult to watch. I guess, my guess is that all of you share that at a minimum. Many other adjectives or descriptors could be used. I left it at that for the time being. Next question, is holding a knee on a person's neck a legitimate tactic the Rona PD uses? No. It's not. Using a knee on the neck in that manner would require a deadly force justification, period. Next question, how does this event and the fallout from it affect your ability to police in areas where there are tensions between police and the community? My answer, it makes the job of policing significantly more difficult. Rona PD staff works every day to earn the trust of the public, and this incident can terminate that trust with some people and can cause doubt in others who would ordinarily be supportive and trusting. Trust is a delicate privilege that sometimes takes years to earn and can be destroyed in an instant like that. Next question, if you need to physically restrain a person, what techniques are used? Answer, the techniques are many and dependent upon the specific situation and circumstances. If, for example, you can just reflect back on that force option continuum I showed you, that DAT model, the, the options are, or the scenarios are just about endless. They just, it's a difficult conversation to have because every situation is different. However, these techniques are derived from the Wisconsin Department of Justice Bureau of Training and Standards, and the Wisconsin system of DAT and arrest tactics is defined as a system of verbalization skills coupled with physical alternatives. This definition reflects the goal of gaining voluntary compliance. Achieving our objective by verbal persuasion is always preferable to having to use physical intervention. Next question, what are examples of situations that would merit enforcement that would require an officer to physically restrain a person? Again, there are far too many to list here. The DAT system is backed by two important concepts that guide Wisconsin law enforcement: the Incident Response and Disturbance Resolution. Incident response is a general framework for how officers should respond to calls. The disturbance resolution provides a model for how officers should deal with situations in which they must intervene to resolve a disturbance. This model is where it is more likely to require an officer to physically restrain a person. This model includes control alternatives, which are geared to overcome passive resistance, active resistance, or their threats. It also involves protective measures or alternatives, which are geared to overcome continued resistance, assaultive behavior, or their threats, and deadly force, which is intended to stop the threat. Next question, do you encourage your officer to call out actions they see from their peers that they don't agree with? The answer, yes, much of which is detailed in Policy and Procedure 1.09 Code of Conduct. The following are several rules of conduct that require an officer to do so: use of force, treatment of persons in custody, requirement to report, integrity, and equality. Each of these rules is defined, and several examples describe what is required of an officer for each respective example. Next question, why didn't I participate? This was a question directed toward me as, as their police chief. Why didn't I participate in Madison 365's Facebook Live conversation that took place on May 28th? My answer, it said, "I'm an active member of the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association, which consists of, in part, of several standing committees." One such standing committee is the United Way Law Enforcement and Leaders of Color Collaboration. The members of the committee represented the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association by participating in the town hall. I had two Rona PD supervisors monitor the town hall while it was occurring. However, a limited number of people could participate, and I believe the number of people on our committee is five. No different than any other committee for our association, and there are probably 15 to 20 different standing committees. I just didn't happen to be a member of that committee. The next question, does the Rona Police Department have a statement about the police killing of George Floyd? And does your department sign onto the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association statement condemning the Minneapolis officers? My answer, Rona Police Department's statement is the same as the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association's statement. I agree with the statement made by the association and signed onto it. Furthermore, I was fully aware of it at the time and its development, and stayed in communication with those leaders of, of the executive committee that drafted the letter. Next question, does the Rona Police Department currently outfit all on-duty police officers with a body-worn camera and, and require that the body-worn camera be turned on immediately when officers respond to a police call? My answer is no. The next question was, a Wisconsin State Journal article from 2017 stated that the Rona Police Department did not have body-worn cameras. Three years later, has this changed? My answer is no. If not, why? My answer, I submitted a budget request for body-worn cameras in 2019, and they were not funded. I also made a verbal request for them in 2018, and the proposal was not supported. I plan to submit another request for them this summer, and I'm hopeful that they will be funded in 2021. I'll pause there and elaborate just a bit. I know that body-worn cameras are not the magic wand. They are not a fix, and they are not going to show you everything. They are a tool, however. A pretty useful tool. We currently have and have had for years dash cameras in our cars with video and audio. There's a lot to be learned from them. They're very helpful. I don't ask for body-worn cameras because I'm looking for more equipment to maintain and more records requests to fulfill. I only ask for them because I think they're absolutely necessary. And if, and if you haven't changed your position on it, I'd like to further discuss at a later and more appropriate time. Next question, does the Rona Police Department conduct evidence-based police de-escalation training? My answer is yes. What do the trainings entail? My short answer is the trainings entail classroom presentations, scenarios from other departments, discussions, and Q and A. So, I'm pretty much all of the above. And most of those de-escalation scenarios apply to a vast majority of the training that we do. What is the racial makeup of Rona Police Department staff? My answer, we're comprised of 25 full-time police officers, 24 males, one female, all of which are Caucasian. Next question, why aren't the answers to these aforementioned questions provided on your website? My answer, the Rona Police Department does not have staff that's dedicated to maintaining our website. Instead, I utilize clerical staff to assist with this task when activity permits. We do our best to provide a quote-unquote lean website with useful information. However, we know that there is room for improvement, and we will continue to work toward making additional improvements to the site. The last question, please let me know how you and your department are responding to the incident and what actions are being taken to ensure that we create an equitable community that prioritizes the safety of all of our residents. My answer was, the Rona Police Department is committed to racial justice and upholding the laws of the US Constitution, the state of Wisconsin, and the city of Rona. Additionally, we are guided by our mission, vision, values, and oath of honor. And that is a summary, or the end of my presentation. If I can answer any questions now, I'll try to. Sorry, it's as lengthy as it is, but I don't know how to do so with any, any less time.
Thank you for all that. Questions, comments from the council, Alder Cap?
I, again, wanted to thank the chief for taking the time to, to present that to us. It's a lot of information. You know, this is obviously, like you already said, it was a difficult thing to see, and it's good to know that, one, that you focus heavily on training. Your officers actually do more, what I would call continuing legal education hours. For me, you guys do far more of that than I do. So that's, that's good to see, and that you're committed to that. And then, two, I was particularly interested in, in your interest and your support of, you know, community-based policing. I think it's true that the, the departments that know the people in the community better and have a good relationship with the citizens, serve the community better, and then you build that trust. A lot of the, a lot of times, what I think you see is in some of these cities where that trust has been broken so many times, it's difficult to repair that, and I think that Rona has done a good job in trying to maintain that. With all of that being said, obviously, on a national level, there's a lot of things that have to be changed, but I'm happy to have, you know, the department that we have, and, and again, thank you for participating.
Thank you for your kind words and support. I appreciate it.
Further questions or comments from the council? Alder Ricky?
Yes, thanks so much for your presentation, Chief Coughlin. I really appreciate all the data and information. What resources would be necessary to actually become accredited with the Eight Can't Wait policy?
I, Mayor Diaz and I are, are gonna have a future conversation about this, about that possibility of first of us seeking, of the Rona Police Department seeking state accreditation. Even though we are not accredited, and I have not future plans to, to do so prior to now, the policies that I have drafted and implemented are all Wisconsin law enforcement accreditation group compliant and certified. And I did so because I just think it's a good practice and they make sense, and I also did so because I was hopeful that it would allow an opportunity to do so potentially in the future. I saw accreditation as more of a cherry on the top as opposed to absolutely necessary. But policing is a, is a difficult profession, and there's a lot of subjectivity to it. A lot of gray area. And, and I think that accreditation is helpful in a lot of ways, and I think it really provides a foundation in which to rely upon going forward. And what's required for that accreditation would be one additional staff member. One additional staff member to greatly assist in policy development and proofs of standards, or standards of proof. The accreditation group for the state of Wisconsin has somewhere between 200 and 300 proofs of compliance compared to the federal, which is between 500 and 600, which I think is, is a bit much. But the state is obviously specific to us in, in Wisconsin. And it, excuse me, the accreditation is a, I believe, for a three-year term, and you continually have to measure and obtain proofs of compliance, policy development, training, and development of staff. So that's what it would take in a commitment, obviously, from you as elected officials and city staff. Excuse me.
Further questions or comments from the council? Alder Journey?
So when it comes to budget time, would this be another opportunity to zero in on some of these recommendations?
I would say, I would, I'll let you help and talk, but yeah, I would say that would be the, the appropriate time and, and budget. Mr. Z, if you can, if you can help, when do, we start preliminary discussions actually somewhat soon?
Correct, we're doing capital, we're doing capital right now, and then we'll get, start getting a staff into the budget around July, August. That's when staff starts preparing our budgets, then we start providing those presentations to the finance committee. So in the coming months, we'll be really diving into the budget for 2021.
And if I could add, it's a peculiarity of, of the city in the sense that, you know, we, we get the majority of our revenue through property taxes, and it can kind of make us, it can make it hard for us to be flexible with, with how we budget. And so it can be kind of counterintuitive when the budgets get laid out. So like, I guess, I guess if I could say one thing is that, you know, any members of the public listening is that if you have thoughts on how the city should be spending its money, now is the time to weigh in. And I would encourage people to contact their elders, contact myself, and just, just let your voice be heard. I guess since I'm talking anyways, I have a quick question for Chief Coughlin. An issue was raised to me about potentially something like a, a mental health first responder, because occasionally the police are called in to, to respond to issues that aren't really, they're, they're not really a law enforcement issue. There's someone dealing with a mental health crisis. And I don't, I don't think Rona is necessarily big enough to fund a position like that ourselves, but you know, if you look at Fitch Run EMS and other regional options, is, is that the kind of thing that, that do you think could work in Rona?
Well, just a initial explanation, we deal with mental health issues on a consistent basis, every day, to be honest with you. They're a big part of it. If, I've said this before, and I'll continue to say it, alcohol, drugs, and mental illness, if, if you remove those three from the equation, it'd reduce our calls for service by 80 to 90%. So that, that ought to be a pretty, pretty, significant chunk of data to chew on. We, we train our officers in mental health issues and crisis intervention. Saw earlier in, in some of that training, we continue to do that. We partner with experts in the field, Dane County Mental Health, Journey Mental Health, crisis workers or psychiatrists throughout the county. It's, it's quite common for us. Blatantly put, the police get called sometimes not because we're the experts, but because the public doesn't know who else to call. It's kind of by default. They, they, they experience a scary or concerning situation, and they call 911, and the police get dispatched. And, and we do our best to handle it. So I don't know how, how that, how that would work to have a specialist that only responded to mental health crises or issues because oftentimes, the mental health crisis that's occurring is not an isolated incident, and it's not the sole factor. Oftentimes, there's a combination of several or all of the above that are occurring, and a lot of moving parts. I don't know how you would make that distinction or differentiation from an initial call assessment. Not to mention, members of the public are very concerned and reluctant to label a situation or people in the way they're responding for obvious reasons. So I don't know how that would work. Continuing to make improvements in that area with additional training, coordination with professionals, and seeing things through to the end, I think is more of a concern or a wish for us. Because all too often, from law enforcement, we are the initial response and intervention. But seeing the actual problem improved or solved is a completely different matter, and I think that's where a lot of the effort should go toward is the, is, is the backend as well. I mean, we need help with the crisis, that initial engagement, because it's very contentious at times, very concerning, and at times very dangerous. But working together with all the other entities, and like I like to say, in addition to community-oriented policing, from a local level, we like to call it community-oriented government. From a local level, it's how well do the Rona Police Department work with Rona Fire, Rona EMS, and Rona DPW and City Hall and electeds, and it's all a bunch of, you know, resources coming together to help try to solve the problem or provide the best service possible, so.
Thank you. And then I guess I just want to make a, a general comment, just from some of the stuff that's been said to me. I think, you know, people have pointed out that in Minneapolis, there, though, a lot of what you would look at and say good rules were in place, but it was clear they weren't, they weren't being followed. And I think one of the really key aspects of, of community policing, of just being, having good policing, is accountability, and, and that starts with the police chief. And so I, I have been telling people, and I'm gonna say it again, I believe Chief Coughlin holds people accountable, and honestly, that's gonna get you further than a lot of rules, just because you, you need accountability. Otherwise, the rules are just, you know, signed to make people feel better, and I want, I don't want to look good, I want to be good. So that's kind of where I stand. But any other questions or comments for the police chief? Alder Ricky?
Just related to what you were talking about, the mental health responses. I'm wondering if more funding could possibly be put into reducing the root causes of, you know, the drug and alcohol issues and domestic violence issues in the first place? Is that a possibility? Um, is that a possibility?
Um, well, that's a a matter for the council. Um, so it's that's something we can talk about um in the upcoming uh budget process. But I would say yes, it is, it is a possibility. Uh, other questions or comments?
Thank you all for your time, um, the opportunity to present for your support. It's been a tough uh couple of weeks or ten days. Seems like a lot longer than that, and I appreciate the kind words and support. Look forward to continuing to work with you and continuing to make Verona PD uh better than what we are today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, uh, no further questions. I will just uh add that, you know, if if there's any members of the public uh who are still interested in talking or commenting, they should definitely reach out to their elders, reach out to me. This is going to be an ongoing community conversation. I think I think we should avoid looking for quick fix fixes. And I think honestly, some of these problems are reoccurring. It seems like, you know, they hit the national news every four or five years. And it's because people, people forget about them or they look for quick fixes. And I think it's better, I think it's better to kind of have a a good and long conversation about it, because that's the only way it's going to get fixed. Um, also, if you're looking later at the agenda, we do have an item uh uh to talk about the George Floyd incident uh in Minneapolis as well, a bit later on in the agenda. Um, but seeing no further hands, we will move on to the um uh next item. I'm gonna pull up. Uh, we will move on to item six, which is announcements. Uh, Alder Cole?
I guess I have an announcement. Um, first off, I wanted to um echo what Charlie said and thank Nat for speaking. I think it's hard for people to um speak in front of a lot of people, especially in an awkward situation as a Zoom council meeting. Um, another thing is I also wanted to thank everybody who contacted us regarding what we're going to be speaking about later, the Sugar Creek um redevelopment. Um, it was really, really, really great to see so much community involvement and engagement around what's going to be happening in a large chunk of land right in our downtown area. So I wanted to thank everybody for that. Um, that being said, I also wanted to make an announcement that um there is going to be a Verona March for Racial Justice. And that is going to be next Wednesday, June seventeenth, from five thirty to seven thirty. Um, the meeting place is going to be a Veterans Park um on Lincoln Street here. Um, the march is going to be from Veterans Park along Verona Avenue down Main Street to Miller's and Sons Grocery and back. Um, there's going to be a press release coming out in the Verona Press. I just wanted to read a little bit about it. Um, Verona organizers have come together to hold a March for Racial Justice in Verona. Organizers include residents of Verona, city council members, school board reps and former Verona High School students. The common desire is to include the voices of Verona residents in the current protests and support for Black Lives Matter and racial justice. Um, and then I won't, I would encourage you to read the full press release when it comes out. Um, so like, so there's going to be some speakers right at the beginning and gathering and speaking. Um, and then march through downtown, and there's going to be a moment of silence. Um, and then a speaker at the end. So, um, yeah, I encourage you to um come be involved. Uh, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, other announcements uh from the council? Uh, Mr. Say, were you gonna? Oh, sorry. Uh, um, seeing no further uh uh announcements, we'll move on to item seven, which is administration Administrator's Report. Uh, Mr. Say.
Thank you. It takes me two clicks to go back to get my mic back on. That's why you saw.
Okay, so you were ready.
I was ready, yeah. Uh, I have too many announcements. We have a Senior Services Committee meeting tomorrow night. Uh, we also have a tourism meeting on June sixteenth. Um, as an update to our August uh Common Council meeting, due to elections, the August tenth Common Council meeting will be moved to August twelfth. So that's to we're removed to the Wednesday because the election is on the Tuesday. So if you could just mark your calendars um accordingly, we would appreciate that. But that that meeting will be moved to August twelfth. Um, the city right now is encouraging uh local restaurants and drinking establishments to to work with us. Uh, we're we're encouraging people to look at their outdoor seating areas. Um, we had the chamber this week, or actually last week, send an email to all restaurants and drink drinking establishments, just letting them know that we're open to conversations and we're open to taking a look at uh options out there with social distancing due to COVID, um, and trying to encourage people to use outdoor spaces. Uh, we recently approved one for the Hop House. And there's also a amendment on the agenda tonight for Toot and Kate's. But just if you hear of any establishments looking at their outdoor options, uh, we're eager and happy to have those conversations with them. We're trying to be as flexible as we can uh due to the COVID nineteen situation. Uh, starting today, Waste Management resumed their normal serve side curb side bulk waste collection that had been suspended for about a month because of COVID nineteen. Um, but that has resumed again. We did have a temporary dumpster at Public Works. Uh, that's going to be removed on June twelfth this Friday. So um people can begin placing items back on the curb like they normally do with their garbage that we picked up again. Um, otherwise, until Friday this week, people can still drop those items at public works. And then finally, uh, we continue to kind of move forward with the census. As of June third, we had a response rate of eighty-one point three percent. Um, seventy-five, about seventy-six percent of those have actually done by the internet. Our twenty-ten response rate was eighty-seven percent. Uh, once again, if we can encourage people to fill this out, the census is the way that we are funding allocations that determine how representatives districts are chosen. Um, so just encourage anyone that you might hear talking about it. You hear anyone who hasn't filled it out. It's easy to do. You can go online, you can call the phone. Uh, it's really simple this year, especially now since you can do it on the internet. So you hear of anyone looking to fill that out, if they need help, contact City Hall. We can put them in contact with people that that can help them, or we can help them possibly. But just encourage anyone to to fill that out. Uh, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
Uh, any questions uh for Mr. Say? Uh, seeing none, we will move on to the engineers report. Uh, Ms. Fisher?
All right, thank you. Um, for the well six pumping station construction project, the contractors coordinating switch over from temporary to permanent electric power, um, that would be with a lion and installation of natural gas with MG&E. The interior painting of the walls and most of the interior plumbing is complete. Generator exhaust piping, HVAC, electrical items in the floor coating are anticipated to be completed in the next two weeks. Sidewalk is planned for this week and asphalt paving by late June. Well, startup is is anticipated for late June to mid-July. For the Verona area high school construction traffic improvements project, um, we broke down the work summary by street. Um, so for West Verona Avenue, outside lanes are closed through the project area while electrical and finishing items are completed. Western Circle final asphalt paving is planned for this week. Traffic will be shifted to accommodate this work. After paving is complete, traffic will be placed in its final location and lane closures will occur to complete finishing items. For Wildcat Way and Stewart Woods Road, asphalt paving and finishing items are planned for this week. For North Now Nine Mound Road, final paving is planned to occur the week or this week again. Um, traffic will then be shifted onto the west or new lanes. Work and paving will be completed on the east half and finishing items will follow. For the side roads, work is continuing and is planned to be completed within the next month or two. And finally, for Military Ridge State Trail, um, the closure is complete and work along the trail is complete. Uh, work on each side of the trail will still be occurring, but should not impact trail use. For the County Highway PD Construction from Woods Road to County Highway M, the new eastbound lanes are completed with landscaping items remaining. Eastbound and westbound traffic are now in the new eastbound lanes with crossovers at each end of the project. Crews are now working on the new westbound lanes and storms sewer, storm sewer, and will continue for the next couple of months. For Liberty Park Phase Four Construction, work on the north side of Wayland Road is complete. The gas and fiber optic utility adjustments on the south side of Wayland Road have been completed as well. The gas main along Liberty Drive and Ambition Street was being installed as of middle of last week. Grading for the curb and sidewalk in the south side of Wayland Road is in progress. For the Fireman's Park Construction, um, Maple Leaf Landscaping seated and placed erosion mat on the Bruce Street Basin. Concrete and asphalt warranty repairs are in progress as of last week. Um, a couple of older projects that I mentioned, I think in the spring are now um either they're about to start, so I'll just reiterate. Um, there's a rapid rectangular flashing beacon project. So that's the the pedestrian flashers. And um, there's actually four there that are going to be going in um at four intersections within the city. And those are North Main Street and St. Andrews Church driveway, North Nine Mound Road and Edward Street, South Nine Mound Road and Military Ridge State Trail, and Wayland Road and Military Ridge Drive. And that project should be starting soon and is anticipated to be completed by mid-August. Um, there's a twenty-twenty asphalt rehabilitation project, and that project will consist of replacing the asphaltic surface on Northern Lights Road between Epic Staff Park A and Epic Staff Park B. The contractor is planning on starting the night of Friday, June nineteenth and finishing paving on Saturday, June twentieth. If there is rain forecasted, it will be pushed to the following weekend. Northern Lights Road will be closed at that time from Breckenridge Road to Nine Mound Road during the weekend work. The twenty-twenty chip seal project, um, again, that consists of chip sealing streets in the West Ridge Estates, Thompson Heights and Cross Country Heights subdivisions. And the contractor is planning on starting June ninth, which is tomorrow, weather dependent, and work should only last a few days. Following the work by the contractor, city staff will be sweeping all excess material. And finally, for Kettle Creek North Phase Three, the water and sanitary sewer work is complete. The curb and gutter and sidewalk report uh, middle of last week, and remaining work consists of binder paving and restoration. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you for the report. Uh, any questions on the engineers report? Seeing no questions from the council? Uh, thank you. Uh, we will move on to the next item, which is uh item nine, committee reports. First up, we have nine A, which is Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Uh, Alder Ricky?
Thank you. The first item under Public Safety and Welfare is um a motion to approve an application for a combination reserve class B intoxicating liquor and class B fermented malt beverages license from Mr. Bruce Tap House Verona LLC, doing business as Mr. Bruce Tap House, six one one hometown circle, suite one oh four Verona, five three five nine three, Ryan Swanson agent.
Uh, motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, uh, Alder Ricky?
Mr. Bruce Tap House currently carries class B fermented malt beverage and class C wine licenses. If this application is approved, the class C wine license will be replaced by a class B intoxicating liquor license, which will allow for the service of any intoxicating liquor versus wine only. The current licenses will then be surrendered to the city before the new licenses will be issued.
Thank you uh for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing nobody uh signaling me, um, uh, we will uh take a vote. Uh, we'll do this by voice vote. Um, so all those in favor of granting an application for a combination reserve class B intoxicating liquor and class B fermented malt beverage license uh for Mr. Bruce Tap House Verona LLC, doing business as Mr. Bruce Tap House, uh, six eleven hometown circle, suite one oh four Verona, Wisconsin, five two five nine three, Ron Swanson agent, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Say nay. And that motion passes. Uh, Alder Ricky?
I make a motion to approve a temporary premises description amendment for the liquor license of Toot and Kate's LLC, one oh nine South Main Street, to include the front stoop area only with four tables for seating restricted to one oh seven and one oh nine South Main Street until October first, twenty twenty.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Think of their pronoun headed first. Second about the, uh, Alder Ricky?
So this um would just allow Toot and Kate's to serve more customers while adhering to required social distancing guidelines. And the original um request was also to include some seating on the sidewalk and terrace level, which we uh did not include, but added one extra table to the um the location entrance level, the stoop.
Gotcha. Um, motion before the body, uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, Alder Posey?
Yes, I just wanted to put a thanks to Rebecca Lindberg for uh providing the additional uh information that she's allowing this and how she'll proceed if there are any issues. That was really helpful information.
Uh, motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing no further discussion, uh, we will uh do this one uh by voice vote. So all those in favor of granting a temporary premises description amendment for the liquor license of Toot and Kate's LLC, doing businesses to Toot and Kate's Wine Bar at one oh nine South Main Street, um, as described in Alder Ricky's motion, say aye.
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 Uh, all those opposed? No? That motion passes. Uh, Alder Ricky?
Thanks. I'd like to make a motion to approve um alcohol license applications for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one licensing period.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second? Uh, second by Alder Kemp, I believe. Uh, Alder Ricky?
Thirty-two applications for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one retail alcohol license renewals were received by the city clerk. Premises inspections by the building inspection and fire departments are ongoing as they were delayed by COVID nineteen restrictions. Approval of the applications will be contingent upon completion of building and fire inspections. A list of applicants is included in the council packet of those. Um, the following has an unpaid invoice from the city for police department special event services in twenty nineteen. The N plus one coffee and beer bar at five oh seven Bruce Street. The alcohol license application for this applicant cannot be approved until the delinquent invoice has been paid in full. So there will be two motions for this item.
Okay. Um, uh, Mr. Say, is that okay to handle it as uh two separate items? Because you have a motion to approve the general ones, or would that need to be clarified?
Clark, do you know that one?
Uh, yes, when we had the same a situation last year, we found that was cleaner if we um had two motions. One, first of all, for the alcohol license applications, um, except for N plus one coffee bar, coffee and beer bar. Um, and then another approving that license contingent upon payment in full of unpaid delinquent invoices.
May amend my motion?
Um, I guess we can handle that uh one of one of two ways. You, we could make a motion to amend it. Or we could, yeah, let's just do it that way. So, uh, Alder Ricky?
Okay, so the the motion should um be stated as um a motion to approve alcohol license applications for the twenty-twenty-one licensing period as presented by the city clerk contingent upon completion of building and fire inspections. And with the exception of N plus one coffee and beer bar, five oh seven Bruce Street.
Okay, motion by Alder Ricky to amend the original motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Touche? Um, any uh further comment on the motion to amend the initial motion? Uh, seeing no further comment, all those in favor of Alder Ricky's amendment to initial motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? And that amendment passes. Um, so just to clarify, it's an approval of the uh alcohol licenses applications with the condition noted and the exception noted, uh, which is N plus one, and we'll follow that up with another motion. General motion before the body, uh, questions, comments on this motion? Uh, seeing no further discussion, we'll uh handle this by voice, voice vote. Um, all those in favor of the approval of the alcohol license applications for the twenty-twenty uh to twenty-twenty-one licensing period um with the conditions specified and as amended, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Uh, Alder Ricky, we're still on the same item.
All right, so the second motion is to recommend or to um approve the alcohol license for N plus one coffee and beer bar, five oh seven Bruce Street contingent upon completion of building and fire inspections and payment in full of unpaid invoices to the city.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey. Uh, anything to add, Alder Ricky?
No.
Motion before the body, uh, questions, comments? Motion before the body, uh, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no, uh, further discussion. Um, all those in favor of the motion as read, uh, by Alder Ricky, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Uh, Alder Ricky.
The last item is a motion to approve the cigarette and tobacco products retail license applications for the 2020, 2021 licensing period.
Uh, motion by, uh, Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Journey, Alder Ricky.
Eight applications for 2020, 21 cigarette and tobacco products retail licenses were received by the city clerk. The list of applicants was included in the council packet.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the, uh, listed cigarette and tobacco retail license applications for the 2020 to 2021 licensing period? Say aye.
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 Opposed? No? And that motion passes. Uh, anything further, uh, Alder Ricky for public safety and welfare?
No, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we will move on to, uh, nine B, uh, under Community Development Authority. The one and only item is a discussion of possible action regarding the developer submissions for the Sugar Creek Elementary School Development Project. Mr. Sarah?
Uh, thank you. So on May 18th, 2020, the CDA reviewed. Four of the six RFP applications, which included Gorman and Company, North Point Devonte. McKenzie Apartment Company and Steve Brown Apartments. The RFPs presentations and a YouTube video, the meeting can be found online. It's on the city's website or on the city's YouTube channel. On June 2nd, 2020, the CDA reviewed the applications of the four developers and asked various questions. Materials from that meeting packet, once again, can also be found online. At the end of the June 2nd meeting, the CDA recommended that the McKenzie Apartment Company. And the Steve Brown Apartments proposals are the CDA's top two proposals for the property. Developers tonight are prepared to give a five-minute presentation regarding their proposals to the common council. After the presentations are complete, we'll do both presentations at the same time. Once they're done, there'll be a question and answer period that the council can ask each developer questions. Once a developer is selected, the selected proposal would still need to go through the development process, including but not limited to planning, rezoning. Site plan review and development agreements in addition to public hearings with the plant commission and common council. And the goal here is the development review, review process. Will occur prior to the November and city and school district closing in the property. So. Uh, you know, if the council tonight or a future meeting selects a developer to work with, what we're selecting is to, to work with that developer on that project. They would still have to go through the entire public planning process that includes. Most likely a planned development and, uh, and at least, uh, one or two rounds of, of public hearings on that. So. Uh, by no means when the council selects that developer. The process isn't over yet. They still have, uh, have, have to kind of go through and kind of finalize their details. But. Uh, like I said, the, the developers plan will presenting to the council for five minutes each. Uh, after that, you'll have the ability to, to ask them questions. Um, and then ultimately after the question answer is over, if you choose to, you, you could potentially make a recommendation. Um, on which developer you want to select to for the city staff and the community to kind of work through that development process with. There any questions for me on the process? Any questions? Or how we got here today, I guess. Any questions on that too? Okay, so I, uh, fir- first off, I mean, the order is going to be McKenzie Company would be first and then second would be Steve Brown Apartments. If everyone's ready, I can start pulling them into the meeting. Yep, I'm getting the thumbs up. Okay. So first up will be, I believe, John McKenzie. And John, you should have the ability, if you choose to do so, uh, share your screen. So if you have anything to share, you should be able to do that. Oh, perfect. It's all yours.
Thank you. Well, I assume you've all seen our presentations and, uh, so you know what we're offering. So what I'd like to do to use my time right now is just to compare and contrast. Our two proposals and, you know, this is a competition, so I'm going to be fairly direct about it. Uh, let's start with the, uh. The commercial mixed-use space that Steve Brown Apartments has proposed for the upper right-hand corner. Um, we didn't propose any commercial because frankly, I think it's risky right now. But if the city wants to go ahead with that, uh, that's fine with us and. You'll see in yellow, the portion of the property that's owned by the Browns now. To the left where it's orange is the property that, uh, would be a part of the Sugar Creek. Uh, which we could detach, sell to Brown. And then they would be able to have the same footprint that they originally proposed and then they could go forward with that project. Regardless of who you select. So that takes the commercial issue off the table. Um, cause you could have it either way. So now let's look at the balance of the proposal. On the Brown proposal, which I'm going to talk about first, the public spaces they offer are basically an open park. They call it gathering space or great lawn, lawn. But it's basically a park and that's not bad. But Verona has 25 parks now and about 130 acres of, uh, of land. What Verona does not have is a community pool. Middleton has a community pool. Madison has several. Mount Horeb even has one. This is a historic opportunity for Verona to have one. Now, the Brown folks talk about, um, their proposals being bold and visionary. Well. I guess when I look at it, the boldest thing about it is the TIF request. They've asked for nearly nine million dollars in TIF. We're asking for two. And as for vision? Our vision was to do what the public wanted. And you had a public input phase and the public clearly said. They wanted a pool. So now on to the. Uh, the New Century School, um, Brown is proposing a children's museum. Uh, you'll have to make up your mind about whether you think that's a good use. But I can tell you it's going to be very expensive to remodel that from a school to a museum. I guess that's where some of the TIF is going. But when you're done with that, you're going to have to operate it. It's not going to be the Brown people op- operating it. It's going to be the Verona taxpayers most likely. And I looked up what the Madison Children's Museum cost to operate annually? Three million dollars. Enough said. What we're offering is a, uh, skilled trades facility in partnership with two fantastic organizations. Madison Area Builders Association and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Dane County. Now, this would be a facility that would educate and make young people aware of the incredible jobs. Available for them in the trades, which would be electricians, plumbers. Carpentry, masonry, HVAC and that sort of thing. And at a time when kids are graduating from college with a lot of debt and not great job prospects. There are great br- job prospects in the trades and no debt. This would fill a huge hole for business and construction. And incidentally, construction is a growth industry and expected to expand over the next 10 years. There is a shortage of skilled labor at the same time. Because not enough young people are going into the trades and the older people are, are retiring. This is extremely important for the community. I've worked for two years, um, to get this partnership together with MABA and Boys and Girls Club. Both boards have passed a resolution now to go forward. The first facility we do could be in Verona. Now to the housing component. Uh, I think we both do a good job. I don't have any criticism about Brown. They do a fantastic job. Uh, I stand on our reputation as well. So I'd just like to finish quickly with a personal note. In 2011, we worked very hard to get our Santa Ridge project, which is on the right-hand corner. Approved. Evan will remember. Um, it was the toughest approval I've ever faced in my life. We were in the Harmony Hills neighborhood and we had a neighbor, Steve Rudolph, who was really tough on us. He was there at every meeting. And when it was approved, I know Steve was disappointed. He was a tough adversary, but I'm really proud to say Steve is now an ally. Nine years later, he will tell you, we've kept our promises. Uh, we've been a great neighbor and incidentally, Steve ended up as a CDA member. He listened to all the proposals. He made us his first choice and I think that says it all. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John. If you could just, uh, hide your screen. Uh, perfect. There we go. Okay, next up is Steve Brown Apartments. And there's a bunch of them I have to pull into the meeting, so just be patient, please. And who else do you need in the, it brought into this?
Looking for, you've got Joe, uh, Margaret Watson and Scott Watson would be great, Adam.
Okay, I don't think I got Margaret.
Not sure where Carla Fisher came from.
She's with us.
There she is.
Yeah, city engineer.
That's right. Hi Carla.
Okay, I think I have everyone.
Looks good.
Okay, it's all yours.
Go ahead, Joe.
All right, good evening. Thank you all for having us. We'll try and get this done fast. I will tell you that I had. Very inspirational, um, remarks planned, um, but my neck is sore and we've just heard from. John, so I'm going to switch that up a bit. When we looked at this RFP, one of the first things I did was call Margaret Watson at Steve Brown Apartments and she told me. I was just about to call you because we knew we'd be perfect partners for this and then we ended Bandawall Associates. So we built off of Verona's aspirations for their downtown. And that's the kind of work that we do. And this is a component of public space, market housing, affordable housing and retail. We're uniquely situated to do that. The Alexander Company specializes in the adaptive reuse of historic buildings. And affordable housing and master planning to revitalize downtown. So that's where we work. That's what we do. Uh, to address the issue of TIF and I'll let others take on, um, some of the other aspects of this. But one thing that we do is we're conservative in our initial projections. We do not want to come back to our community partners. And change a plan, change financing, present you with a new challenge. Um, so yes, we have a, we have a high TIF request and it's conservative. And to clarify my own clarification, it's actually not a TIF request. It is a financing gap. So to provide 240 housing units, 100 of them being affordable, 10,000 square feet of commercial space. And there is a community space that everybody can use year-round. Um, is a major endeavor. It's a $54 million investment in downtown Verona. I will note that Mr. McKenzie started with no TIF, then went to 2 million. And tonight, part of his proposal, uh, which is affordable housing. Has been, been presented and almost certainly presents an additional gap. When you do urban infill development like this. The costs are infrastructure and affordable housing and to the extent the community wants a community space. Um, so I think we should be straightforward with the fact that we vetted our proposal. It's thorough. We know what it costs. We're good partners between us and Steve Brown for retail, community space, affordable housing and market rate housing. We will not, um, slip the rug out from under the city of Verona if you choose us to become our, your partner. Uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Munson from Bandawall Associates.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, while I am starting off here, let me just get my screen pulled up. Uh, good evening and, and thank you for the chance to be here, uh, digitally to talk about our vision for the Sugar Creek property. But before we start on our vision, we really began this process. With taking a step back from the site to develop an understanding of what Verona's adopted plans are. Uh, these plans reflect many years of work that you have all had a voice in and, and along with the community, we take them very seriously. And in this case, you've adopted plans that call for an expanded and enhanced downtown. Which coupled with this uniquely positioned 12-acre property. And a development team seeking to implement them is a unique opportunity. Implementing the call to extend and support downtown is the cornerstone of our proposal and that's really what the plans reflect. With this opportunity is really unprecedented in that a 12-acre site, uh, adjacent to the, in the community adjacent to downtown. Along a key arterial with historic structure really is unique and something that other communities dream of. Uh, and so we're excited to present our vision to capitalize on this opportunity. Our goal built out of the RFP is to create a new vibrant community destination and anchor and support a downtown. An exciting addition to the community as a whole. This goal was built on the community's vision and includes all of the elements of the RFP. By creating a unique destination for a diversity of housing, walkable retail, community gathering, along with significant tax base as illustrated in our proposal. Starting with the destination, this project sets aside a two-acre town center in a highly visible and walkable location along West Ron Avenue. This space delivers year-round activities to serve the entire community. We see this not as a park, but a great community gathering space where you can host concerts on the green, summer movie nights. Or ice skating in the winter, or even just simply a location we can all speak to today of just community gathering and getting together with your neighbors. This will be an active amenity in support of downtown and the community and offering programming space. That draws visitors to downtown, to the businesses, to the neighborhoods while serving the needs of the community. Pair with this destination. Our proposal seeks to renovate the New Cent- the, the New Century School building. And we have committed to placing that on the historic register and return with the goal of returning it to its unique role as a community asset. As we discussed with the CDA, we're comfortable with the deed restriction. So to speak to the previous speaker, we welcome that because we see this as an asset. Now, each of the teams have offered a wide range of potential uses and as Mr. McKenzie noted, the Boys and Girls Club could be a great possible outcome. Along with community centers and museums. But those are possible outcomes regardless of who gets selected. Both development teams being considered have a long history of working with nonprofits and supporting community organizations. And are equally capable of doing so here. The final use of the New Century School should be determined by a robust inclusive community process and not be a criteria for making this final selection. Having said that, we work forward to, we look forward to working with the community to identify that final use and desired outcome, but believe that our strength. And experience in historic renovation is a clear differentiation between the teams. Extending the downtown. Is another unique component of our submittal as the only applicant to integrate walkable retail as a meaningful component. This site would form the third leg of activity in this project. Being supported by and in support of the adjoining community destination. And it's not just additional retail. It works because. The open space and the community's assets are placed in close proximity along with the exposure along West Ron Avenue. Diversifying the housing options in any given neighborhood is the final component of our proposal, which figures. Unique opportunities for market rate housing. And workforce housing options. And as Joe mentioned, a very well-developed program for workforce housing options. That will meet the needs of firefighters, nurses and schoolteachers while being coupled with high-quality designs inside and out. All of these components are brought together as a vibrant and exciting addition to Verona and the downtown. But before I wrap up, just to kind of address the elephant in the room, why didn't we incorporate a community pool like Mr. McKenzie did? Well, just like we did our homework on the existing plans for downtown, we look closely at your studies of the community pool. Even going as far as looking at the possibility of incorporating the New Century School. But having looking closely at what a community pool means in terms of scale of facilities. Amount of land, construction expense of around seven to eight million dollars, permanent operating expense. We had concerns about the impact on this site. And the ability to address all the goals of the RFP. Along with a lost opportunity for year-round activities and supportive downtown. Now, taking a closer look at comparable community pools identified in your study. Here is what that looks like at scale for Middleton's Aquatic Center. Sun Prairie's Aquatic Center and the Goodman Pool. You can see the land impacts the result from having to plan for and accommodate the programming. The necessary space for the pool, the support structures, the parking and the access. For reference, if you wanted to see what that would look like in person in your community, here's the Badger Ridge School site. Where you could compare how a pool of feet would fit. Each facility I mentioned would fit in an already existing space bound by the driveways. And could share the transportation and parking that's already present, much like they do in other communities. Now, not that we're proposing. Now, not that we're proposing any particular site, but you can see each of those facilities would fit into a site of about five plus acres. Again, when we looked at the pool, our concerns were that the cost and impact on housing diversity, community benefit and the creation of year round activity centers and supported downtown would significantly impact the ability to deliver all of those components. And we strongly believe that this site can be a catalyst for downtown if developed as a year round activity center. The final item to discuss tonight, which Joe also already touched on a little bit, so I won't go into all the details that back it up, but one thing I would add is that, as Joe said, the gap in financing is really created through the infrastructure, the community destination and the affordable housing. And that's the butt four test that that kind of funding is intended to achieve. But we're confident that our $54 million improvement in downtown will create the increment necessary to bridge the gap in the long term. In summary, this approach and vision really has resonated with the team. We hope it does with you tonight as well. We're excited to be here as one of the final two applicants, but remember tonight's vision is about selecting the best partner to move the project forward through the process, as Adam said, in close partnership with the city and the team to refine the vision and deliver the goals of the RFP. We believe that our strengths and experience in every aspect of the project represents a strong opportunity to implement your plans. And so with that, I thank you again and like to turn the screen over to Margaret for a few final remarks.
Thank you, Brian. Would you mind not? Yeah, thank you. Okay. Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. And in closing, I leave you with three reasons our team will deliver a beautiful and vibrant downtown destination for Verona. Experience, partnership and passion. First experience, our team has extensive experience and expertise in implementing all aspects of the project from historic restoration to super high condo quality, market rate and affordable housing. And our proposal was designed by a professional urban planning company. Second, partnership. We are excited to partner with Verona to implement a vision for all four seasons. A multi-generational pedestrian friendly community hub, complete with retail shopping and multi-use civic space for all, knit right into the heart of hometown USA. Imagine with me for a minute, kids, parents, grandparents venturing out to the art fair or farmer's market at the town center, stopping for ice cream. Or like me, a drink at the local brew pub while listening to an outdoor concert and enjoying time together. Or after a really nice visit at the Verona area children's museum in the historically registered New Century School, you might hit the Winter Festival outside for ice skating, hot chocolate and a visit to local vendors selling holiday ornaments. The point is, if you dream it, we can build it. That public peace can be whatever Verona wants. Just know that we will work to refine all aspects of the proposal through a transparent, public process in partnership with the city and all of its residents. We are the most flexible and committed team. And finally, passion. We are truly passionate about this opportunity and about Verona. Several of our team members live in Verona and I assure you that we will be 150% engaged partners to assist in creating and implementing the best town town in which our residents can live, work and play. We hope you select our team for this journey with you and we thank you for your service on the council. Thank you so much. We're open for questions.
Now is the Q and A portion. So if you have any questions for either development team or both. And John, you can turn your video on if you'd like there. There we go. If you have any questions for either development team, just identify them and ask away. Or if you have questions for staff, just ask, you can ask as well.
I see Alder Ryan.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two questions for both both parties. One question is, can you just give me a quick breakdown of the mix of one, two and three bedroom? And then also I would like to know what you are proposing for the costs of the rentals for both the market rate as well as the affordable housing.
I guess we will start with Mr. McKenzie.
I just I didn't bring that information with me because it's in the package, but we have a split between studios, ones and two bedrooms. We don't currently have any three bedrooms. People have asked about that. If the market wants three bedrooms, we'll include them. Jack, what are our rents for?
About 1,200 for one bedrooms, 1700 to 1,800 for two bedrooms. Studios go for about $1,000 to $1,100.
Thank you. Steve Brown, I don't know who's answering that, but same question.
Dan, could you please answer that? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. We don't have an exact breakdown on our studios, ones, twos and three bedrooms at this point, but we are contemplating three bedroom apartments. The market does dictate it. Market does ask for it. It's been demonstrated in our previous two projects in close proximity to Verona. Three bedrooms are extremely popular with both families, with kids and as well as boomers that are downsizing, but still either needing an office or wanting a space for the grandchildren and kids when they visit. Our rents, again, we're looking a couple of years out, but are going to be probably pretty comparable to what Jack and John are suggesting in terms of the market rate. I'll let our affordable partners comment on their rents since they're in the room. Matt, you want to take that?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everyone. We have currently programmed one and two bedroom apartments. We're debating whether to include some three bedrooms. And our one bedroom apartments range from about $825 to $975. And the twos will range from $990 to $1,175. So it's really it's going to be a really good value for the affordable residents that we're catering towards. Because the typical one bedroom market rate would start closer to $1,300 a month. So it'll be a significant discount and a great value for your your service sector employees, your school teachers, your firemen and and those types of people that have a hard time paying rent these days.
Thank you. Alder Ryan, did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
All right, other I see Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, my first question, and I'm probably going to have a lot as we continue this, so bear with me. It's the trial lawyer in me, I suppose, but first, my first question is for Mr. McKenzie. With respect to the building, New Century School. I do like the idea of offering programming for, you know, high school students and maybe even younger to to get them interested in the trades. However, with with that building, it's a community building. So is your idea or is your vision that that would be used exclusively for that only? Or would it still be open to other members in the community to use it?
Well, I wouldn't have any objection to making it available for the community. You know, it's a school now and what we're proposing is essentially a school again. But if we can figure out some adaptive use for the community, that's that's fine.
Okay. And then also just for both both developers. You know, part of part of what I've been I've been looking at these, I think there was one other developer, only one developer that proposed some side by side town homes. When you guys put together your proposals, was that something that you thought about adding into the site? And the reason why I'm asking is because for some people first entering, you know, and wanting to purchase a home, they may not be able to afford a home in Verona, you know, in the in the classic sense of a home in some of the neighborhoods that that we live in. But a town home in central or downtown Verona would maybe be ideal. It's also ideal for individuals that are older, their children have now moved out of the home, out of their homes and are now thinking about retiring, but they don't want to move out of Verona. So my question is, you know, was that something that you considered when you put together your proposals?
For this one, we'll reverse the order and do Steve Brown first and then McKenzie. Matt, you want to go? Matt, you want to go first?
Sure, I guess. In terms of the affordable component, our product is somewhat similar to town homes. They're not two story units, but it's a two story walk up building and they'll have garages that face an inner courtyard. So from the exterior will be very similar to a town home and it'll function very well and it's economical to build and it's economical to maintain over the long term.
Great. Mr. McKenzie?
We have done town homes. In fact, I'm building some now. Given the the fact that you've got a 12 acre site here and we have about five acres dedicated to the public, we just didn't really see that there was the room to to build a less dense component. But one thing that we've been doing in recent years, which has been very effective and I really like, are doing first floor walk ups. So on the first floor, you can park on the street or you can park underground and that you walk straight up the front porch into a front door and that feels very much like a home.
And then just my my final question. You know, Mr. McKenzie, at the beginning of your proposal, you know, you know very well that we do want to see a vibrant downtown that includes not only density, but then also retail and commercial. And so my question is, as you mentioned, there's the possibility of the the property on the corner on Marietta Street. Is it a possibility that should you, you know, win the site that you would or could, you know, consider purchasing that property to include that into eventual development of that site? And then conversely, to Steve Brown Apartments, should your plan not be selected, what is your plans for that property on the corner? Should that be the case?
Am I first?
Yes, sir.
Well, I I'm just going to have a blunt with you on. Yeah, I look at at Verone Avenue right now and I see a fence around the forward development. Sugar River Project, Steve Brown is is building retail. I don't know if it's leased yet or not. Avanti is has purchased the classic across the street and has plans for it. We just entered this COVID-19 situation at a time when, you know, the commercial retail markets are evolving. Are people going to be going to offices as often? Are they going to be shopping in the same way? I don't know. I just don't think it for me would be a prudent move at this time. But I I do like the mix of commercial and residential uses and at some point, I think that that corner would make a lot of sense. Okay, now my brother in law happens to be John Livace. John Livace develops more commercial property, including in Verona than anybody in Dane County. And he has given me quite an education on retail and commercial now. And he'll tell you, the way that people shop 10 years ago isn't the way they're shopping now. And what's working currently, retail centers with a barber shop. You know, maybe a dentist or something, but it's just it's it's a time in transition and I just think I wouldn't do it as an investment, but if if, but I think we could certainly preserve it as an opportunity for the future by selling a portion off to Steve Brown.
Can I answer that now?
I guess Alder Kemp, I had a good question. That was directed towards both developers, Alder Kemp? Okay, yeah. Okay, Steve Brown, yep, you're up.
Okay, I'll try to answer it and then I may have to lean on Dan a little bit here, but where John sees concern, we see opportunity. So with everything going on with the safer at home, we're seeing people just itching to get out there. And we also see the ability for retail, especially along that corner, maybe some smaller spaces for local startup businesses or others at a at a nice, you know, per square foot to get them started. I do agree with John that people are shopping differently and so maybe they're doing more online, but they want to come to smaller stores and those sorts of things. But given what we're doing over by the West End, we are seeing a lot of traffic and a lot of people who do want to be in Verona in commercial space, we're just being a little bit selective. And I think the same the same could go, the same question could go for a pool, you know. Are people going to want to be at community pools? I think that the answer is that people want to get back to normal as soon as it is safe. So for us, we're not seeing that as an issue. And I don't know if, Dan, if you want to add anymore, we're really seeing this as an opportunity.
I was I was just going to say the same thing. Essentially, we're not planning for right now. If we were, I don't know that a pool would be the best investment either as municipal pool in Sun Prairie and many of the other communities are still closed. We're planning for the long term. We're confident in retail in this location and in general. It's an extension of the downtown. It's walkable retail. It's extending the downtown. It's it's creating that experience for the resident. It's going to work in concert with whatever that New Century School use ends up being as well as the civic space and the residential units that are going to be developed on the site. So we're confident in retail. Again, we're not developing for tomorrow. We're developing for the long term because that's what our interest is. And that's what our investment is going to be.
Anything further, Alder Kemp?
Oh, thank you both. I appreciate it.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. I'm unmuted. Yep. Okay, this is really a question for the Brown Property. I've seen you guys in front of the council quite a bit, even in Public Works Committee meeting. How many properties do you guys already own in Verona?
Currently, we have the three buildings, about 104, 106 units at the West End. We've also got the Market Five Project, which is being delivered in the next week and a half or so. And then we have a couple of smaller units on Main Street as well as the house on Marietta Street. In all, we've got about 2,000 units that we own and manage throughout the region, primarily in Dane County, but that's our footprint in Verona right now.
So do of those properties, how much have you actually developed versus just purchased?
We purchased the West End units from Terrence Wall.
Don't say that name, sorry.
I know, as it was coming out of my mouth, I was thinking this is a bad idea, but we purchased those properties, I think in 2016. And the in terms of development, the Market Five Project is the only ground up that we've done in Verona so far.
At what stage is that in?
Like I said, it's delivering at the end of next week, the the whatever the 15th is, I'm a week off maybe, but yeah.
So delivering means move in?
Finishing. Yep, the project is complete and our first users will start building out.
Okay. Well, thank you, because I think I did have a little bit of confusion between you guys and someone else.
Not Terrence Wall.
Terrence Wall. Honestly, I I did like your proposal. I, you know, as I think about this property, I think the city has a unique opportunity and this is maybe a little more directed at the council. But almost since I've been on the council and certainly since in the last six or seven years, there's been a lot of push to make the city more attractive to visitors or walkable, more enjoyable to be in instead of going out. I I think I've for countless times that we're considered a bedroom community for Madison and I would love to hear anyone who disagrees with me, but the the city has come into this property and as I look at what, you know, the community pool is awesome. I've always been a fan of the pool, but I also like keep thinking to myself, what is going to bring people to Verona? I've seen some restaurants succeed and fail. You know, I'm really sad that some of the turnover we've seen lately. But I'm also happy with some of the restaurants sort of come in. But I'm like, we have an opportunity to create a a working space that can bring in other types, you know, the idea of an open ice rink, the idea of music festivals, you know, where do we have a place that brings people together? And honestly, I really like what I've seen in both of those, but I feel like we're squandering the property but not by not using all of it for the community when we're putting in apartments, when we're putting in row houses or side by sides, when we're putting down these permanent residences, we're giving up community space and as much as we have parks and the smaller pockets around our city, I really want to stretch our developers' imaginations on what can we do as a community? And I mean, I certainly like eating. I like walking to places to eat. I enjoy. And I mean, I certainly like eating. I like walking to places to eat. I enjoy music. I enjoy activity. I'd really like to see some more inspiration on those kind of things. Obviously, we can't have all of that. You know, there's got to be some sort of balance. But, you know, looking at at some of these plans, 50% residents, when I look at just a square footage and then 50% other things, it just doesn't seem like enough. And I would like to see more community spaces. That doesn't necessarily mean a community center, because when I think about a community center, like what do we have in Verona? Well, we've got a very active library and they're doing a great job. We've got a very active senior center. They're doing a great job. But what 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 can these developments offer that brings people here? Thank you.
Sorry, Aldo Touche, were you expecting a response from the developers on that one?
No, I wanted to, I wanted to get the community to think, the committee to think about that stuff. And if and if either developer had a response, that'd be great.
I guess, I guess we'll Steve Brown, if you want to respond, and then we'll do McKenzie next.
Brian, you're up.
I would be happy to, because as a planner that works in municipalities across the Midwest and in very comparable communities of scale. That is the challenge for a lot of downtowns. People are looking for different habits of how they shop. But one underlying tone that has worked time and time again has been reliance on experience and community. And giving them places and destinations to go to that are more than just going to one destination. They're spillover. They go to the museum, to the festival, then to the retail next door. And they walk over from the neighborhood. Those are the kind of environments that have proven to be resilient in the face of changing economics over time. And so that's really why our focus on this was how do we give people reasons to come downtown regardless of the time of year? And give them places to go more than once. We want them to park and walk if they drove here. But we want them to go to as many different experiences that speak to what the community of Verona is. And those kinds of experiences need spaces. And so that's what led us to the design of that park as an asset to give people, again, a reason to come downtown. A reason to be proud of the type of environment that they've got around the corner and down the street. And so that's what this design does, and it really does create that framework where each of the components support each other in a way that then leverages more than just this site, but the entire downtown.
Mr. McKenzie?
Okay, I didn't mention all the features of our site because I tried to be follow your five minute guideline when I made my presentation. But we we do have a park area with a bandstand. And I think is a really attractive feature that would be available for concerts or theater or or special events. It's also an open space that would be available for farmers markets and other that sort of thing. And we, I think in the winter, you could probably put an ice rink there. That wouldn't be a problem. One thing that I I think I would respond to you, Evan, is that and Livace would tell you this, it'd be the first thing he'd say. For all of these various retail and commercial components that you want so badly to work, you need rooftops. You need people living there. And there's a wonderful interrelationship between residents living close to facilities. They're not driving. So I believe people drive a vibrant downtown. And so there's a community benefit to having residences on that site. The other thing it does for you is whereas strictly community facilities don't generate tax revenue. Rooftops do.
Thank you. Further questions from the council, especially from people. I see Alder Ryan, I'm wondering if anyone who hasn't asked Alder Posey, and then I have Alder Ryan too, and then Alder Journey. So I got all three of you.
All right. Is that me first, I assume?
Yes, sorry.
Just wanted to make sure, because I do have a couple. I'll try to keep them quick. But so through this process, we've had really great community feedback on these. The challenge has been that it's pretty much 50 50 split. I've sat down and kind of set them all aside, side by side, and it's pretty much split split right down the middle. So obviously, going through the next steps after we select one of you. I my first question, I guess I'll target to Mr. McKenzie, is what if we come out of that process and there's no pool?
There is no pool?
Well, if we come through that process, because there's been strong views on either side from residents. And so coming through our further development process, what if there was no pool? And I will tell you from, I come from an aquives background that was my profession, you know, early on and then even later in life. And the size and what is currently being proposed for our community, I don't know that it meets the need. So there were definitely, in my opinion, need to be further development of that site. And that pool design and that aquatic facility design. So I guess, and that's where my question comes to you, because I will tell you, I absolutely love your concept for the graded school building. I think that that is absolutely a need. It's a need in Dane County. It's a need in every community, but to have it housed here, I absolutely think that is wonderful. So there's parts of both. So I'm asking you guys some tough questions, because there are definitely parts of both of your concepts I love and parts that I'm challenged by. So for you, it's the question of what if there we come through our public process? And whether it's budget constraints, whatever it might be, we can't do the pool or we can't do the pool right away?
Yeah. Well, okay, the reason that we focused on a pool was because of the citizen input phase. Where it came across very clearly that the it was, the community seemed to want a pool. I also think it's it's an asset that I got excited about because my new daughter-in-law grew up in Verona. Said that was the one thing she really missed as a kid. But, you know, if somehow the community input reversed itself and and people said they didn't want a pool or for some reason. There was some alternate use, either there would be less of a TIF request most likely. Or delivery of money to Verona because we wouldn't have to build the pool. I I think, you know, it's a central location. I think it's just a wonderful opportunity. But, you know, I understand there's an evolving process and there'd be more citizen input.
Alder Posey?
Thank you. Okay, and now kind of switching again, feedback from the community to Steve Brown and team. What if there was less retail? Because that is definitely something I have heard on from the community is we have empty storefronts. And what is it that we would do with? So what would your proposal look like with less retail space? Because that is definitely something I've heard loud and clear from community members is that we've got too much and it's empty. And of course, knowing what we could potentially be facing with future retail, brick and mortar, what would your proposal kind of shift to if there was less?
Sure. A couple of thoughts on that. First of all, what we're proposing is somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000 square feet, which I think is a really good balance in terms of size. It's enough retail to have an impact on a specific site and be a good connector to the downtown. But it's not a such a significant amount where it can really be an albatross or it can really drag something down. In terms of there being empty storefronts or or some feedback that there's too much retail in Verona, I guess I would counter with it's not necessarily too much, but it might be in the wrong form. I think Verona has a lot of small retail in converted single family homes or in sort of disjointed locations. And what we're trying to do and what we would be doing by extending the downtown is is sort of building on that connection to the existing infrastructure that's already there. And extending it through the community. But, you know, if if for whatever reason, through the public process, if retail was something that was just a nonstarter to the various commissions as we went through, that corner is still vital. And that corner still sort of unlocks the rest of the space, regardless of what form or use the building that sits on it takes.
And if it's okay if I add to that, I think that the point is we're going to be flexible and we're going to work through the process transparently with the community. We also looked at the citizens' input and what they wanted for a pool. But we just didn't think that they wanted that pool. They wanted an aquatic center that would fit on a larger site. But if that changes, or if they need something different, we're committed to helping Verona through this process to figure out what it is that they want. And I do agree with Mr. McKenzie, that density will help drive the vibrant downtown. Thank you.
Alder Posey?
Thank you. Okay, so follow up on the retail. Do, and I know this was mentioned in CDA, I'm sorry, I don't have it in my notes. What is the retail rent? That you guys would be looking at? We talked about the rental rates for the housing side, but what is the retail side?
Scott, I'm going to punt to you if that's all right, and I apologize in advance for doing it.
So so the retail at that location, I think we mentioned in our CDA presentation, it's it's going to be kind of a loss leader. But as we've mentioned tonight, it is necessary to sort of fully activate the site and fully extend the downtown to the other side of the Sugar Creek site. The market rate for retail in Verona, we are currently renting and listing on the West End site at $18 to $22 per square foot. I think that the rents closer to downtown would be slightly less than that, actually. Again, to promote the right sort of retailers coming in and to activate the site as quickly as possible. We'd be essentially subsidizing that rent, at least in the initial term.
Alder Posey?
And would it just be parking was the other question I had for you around. I can't recall if there were additional parking for all the retail or was it just street parking with kind of what's existing currently?
Yeah, we would, in our in our site planning, we've contemplated, we're contemplating parking behind the retail. Either accessed off of Marietta Street or potentially, you know, through a cutout in the building with a driveline off of West Verona Avenue. So we would be contemplating parking behind the retail for the retail, as well as some additional street parking.
And now my final one, and this will go to both of you. I'm not sure who wants to go first on it. But what is your process for raising rents? I know we're talking right now today about where we're starting off. But what is that process that you would be going through? Because, you know, as we look forward and ahead into the future, what we've got here and what we're facing with workforce housing here in our community. What would be the process for raising rents going forward?
I lost track of who was next, so I'm just going to say, Mr. McKenzie, if you want to address that one first.
Yeah, sure. I didn't mention tonight, but I I have mentioned before that McKenzie Apartment Company has a number one rating online of any or online reviews of any apartment owner in the state of Wisconsin by far. Part of that is our relationship with our residents. We spend a lot of time earning their trust. And and so when we raise rent, first of all, we have an algorithm. We look at everybody's rents. And we position ourselves, looking at amenities and location and a bunch of things. And we keep ourselves a little less than we think we could be compared to the competition. And so generally, the rents have gone up maybe a couple percent a year, but it's pretty limited.
Thank you, Steve Brown.
Matt, would you like to touch on the affordable?
Yeah, I can. I can take that. So the the Affordable Housing Tax Credit is a is a 30 year compliance period, so we're required. And we want to provide affordable housing for the long term. And the the rents are really based on income. It's a percentage of the median income. So, you know, we're obligated to serve those lower income tenants over the long term. And, you know, rent, the rental maximums flow with people's income. So it has a built in mechanism to stay affordable for the people that we're serving.
In terms of the market rate, we don't use an algorithm. We typically look at things on a property by property basis and review things that way. Really with sort of a manual check. It's probably inflationary at best. It's not going to be something that's typically across the board. And again, it's it's tough to predict even what the starting point is going to be three years from now. But that's sort of the way we we take a look at it on a property by property, municipality by municipality basis. And make adjustments based on the market and and take take things sort of one one step at a time from that perspective.
Thank you. Next, I have Alder Journey and then Alder Ryan.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I think that the city staff and the CDA is to be commended on the work that they did and boiling it down to two outstanding proposals. So thank you for that. So and then I I had the same issues that Alder Posey has. Because I could, you know, at 1 o'clock this afternoon, I was for one proposal and at 2 o'clock this afternoon, I was for a different proposal, the other proposal. But one thing, when listening to the the CDA sessions, and and this is getting down to the land now without anything on it yet. McKenzie, I think, had offered a proposal of $3 million for the land. And how did how did you come to that offer to put on the table? And then pardon me if I misunderstood Brown's proposal. But I heard that you were anticipating a donation of the land. And if I'm wrong on that, please correct me. But so I'd just be interested in each of your thoughts on on your proposals.
All right, is I guess Steve Brown, if you would clarify first, and then we'll go to Mr. McKenzie.
Got it.
Our our proposal was that the there would be no cost for the land acquisition. Bearing in mind that the approximately approximately, almost half the site is would would remain public. So really, we're talking about six to seven acres of of land for the development of the private portion only, the apartments and the commercial.
And and that, so you were thinking that that would be donated or is that something that you would buy?
No, that it would be contributed to the to the project at no cost, correct?
I see.
Yeah, Mr. McKenzie?
The way I I looked at it, Charlotte, is as if we were buying a piece of land, what would I pay for the for the property? And I valued it based on, as we normally do it in our business. We we value land based on a per unit cost. So if you can get 10 units, it's a multiple of of a basic per unit cost. And so on the on the market side, I valued the land at $12,000 per apartment unit. And then on the affordable side, I valued it at 6,000 an apartment unit. Rich Arneson, he has come on screen, but he's our, is Rich there?
Yep.
Oh, there you are, Rich. Hi. Phone House is doing the affordable component. So any questions that you've got relative to the affordable side, it should be directed to Rich. But anyway, so I came up with a value of 3 million or somewhere around there. And then use that to pay for the improvements that we're proposing. Now, because we're buying the land as opposed to having the land contributed, that may explain some of the TIF gap between us and and the other.
Thank you.
Next up, I have Alder Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first of all, I want to say I'm really big into community consultation and there's been quite a lot of it. And I appreciate that and I encourage more of that. and there's been quite a lot of it, and I appreciate that, and I encourage more of that. You know, just to reiterate what's already been said, I, I just wanna state what the concerns are of the community. And so, as it relates to Brown, I think that the general vibe is that we already have vacant, you know, retail. And so that's a concern, adding more of that, and also that we have pockets of retail, which is, which is obviously not the fault of either of these two parties, but the things are dispersed and disparate in Verona. We don't have a contiguous sort of, you know, downtown area. As it relates to McKenzie, the concern is that, you know, I, I think generally, people are interested in a community pool or an aquatic center, and there's some support of that, but that this particular site is not the right location, as has been sort of asserted tonight, that the land for this is not suitable for a large aquatic center and that the expectations of the community would be let down by this particular pool. So, you know, in fact, one of the emails I think I got from a citizen was that, you know, that the pool that's being proposed here is akin to something that Middleton had thirty years ago. And so why would we, why would we wanna replicate something, you know, a thirty-year-old sort of pool that is inadequate for a growing community like Verona? So those are the two, I think, the two primary issues that people have with both proposals. I think there's a lot that's attractive about both proposals. I think the bandstand is a great idea. I think having a central place where people could hang out and maybe attend a concert or something is a great idea. When I, you know, I'm, I'm very, very new, obviously, as a member of the council. And so, but I, I did a lot of community consult before I became a part of it as well. And the two sort of mandates I feel like I was given by the community are to, to focus on affordable housing, to focus on a walkable downtown that is vibrant and has people engaged. And so I think my question to both parties is, how do, how does your proposal address my mandates of creating affordable housing and creating a walkable, vibrant downtown community?
Okay, we will go with Mr. McKenzie first.
Hey, well, we, we both have affordable housing components. And if Rich would like to, to answer to that, we should give him the time to do that. I do wanna respond to your comment about the pool, though, because we work with Badger Swim Pools, who has built a number of pools, the Maple Bluff Pool and other pools. We've also consulted and gotten input from people in the community, competitive swimmers, who, we had proposed a six-lane pool, and they would like to see an eight-lane pool because they're appropriate for city swim meets. And an eight-lane pool is a couple hundred thousand bucks more, which we could do easily within the TIF. So I, I don't know, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a great location because it's pretty central. But, you know, I guess that it's ultimately up to you. But the, you know, this idea that it's seven million dollars? Well, I, I don't know where that number comes from. We've got hard numbers from people that build these pools. And I, you know, you also have to be realistic about the amount of area. We're not looking at the Goodman. The Goodman is a sprawling facility that's got a whole lot more to it. But this is a, a eight-lane or six-lane pool sufficient for city swim meets, and I think appropriate for a, a community the size of Verona, which you'll have to make up your mind.
Mr. Arneson, did you wanna add something on the affordable to address Alder Ryan's question?
I think if it's okay, I, I'd like to answer.
We'll let Mr. Arneson go first, if I got his name pronounced right, and then we'll switch over to Steve Brown.
Yes, can you hear me? Yeah, you, you got my name right. Well, you know, I, I just would, would add that, you know, Stonehouse has been doing affordable housing since nineteen ninety-six. We've arguably done the nicest affordable housing in, in Dane County, many of our projects. And then I would encourage you all to, to look on our website or go see the, the developments yourselves. They're virtually indistinguishable from, from market-rate housing. And I think more than anybody, we, we go above and beyond with amenities in our affordable housing, with business centers, community rooms, places for people to congregate. We, we have done more in energy efficiency and sustainability than, than, than any other affordable housing developer. We had the first Energy Star-rated buildings in Dane County. In fact, two of the first buildings in the country that were labeled Energy Star Buildings. We've been incorporating solar, hot water and solar electric in our projects for a, a long time and, and continue to do that for our, for our developments, and would do that here. We, we feel that's very important, not just from, obviously from a sustainability or efficiency, energy use standpoint, but also, you know, as, as Matt Meyer mentioned, I, I mean, the, the rents for, for affordable housing developments are capped based on, based on income, based on county median incomes. And, and several, you know, year to year, they, they may not increase. But of course, our operating expenses are not limited and may continue to increase. So we, I, I think more than other developers, put as much in upfront on the capital side in the building to do what we can to keep operating expenses low, to ensure viable projects well into the future. These are not developments that, that you build and then flip in a year or two. They're long-term developments, you, the developer has to stick with them. We have, we have guarantees, personal guarantees on, on tax credits and loans. So we've been doing this for a long time and have done as, probably as much affordable housing in Dane County as, as just about anybody else, and really, I think, the highest quality. So our, our residents want to stay there. We have long-term residents, they don't like to move. Once they get into, when we have long waiting lists for our developments, once, once a resident gets into our, our, our development, they, they don't wanna leave. They tend to wanna stay. It's good for ability, good for, good for the operations of the project. I'm happy to answer other questions about our, our, our particular project.
Thank you. We will now turn it over to Steve Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think Alder Ryan has it right here, that, you know, we have to think big for Verona. We have to think vision. And if you want a destination downtown, and if the citizens want a destination downtown, then we have to think about the relation between the location and the size of retail, along with the density and how that interacts with the community space and the civic space, and how it all works together. It's just as much about location and relationship and interaction as it is in general. So maybe the location of this retail and creating this downtown destination, maybe it will kind of bring people in towards that center. You know, it's about community, bringing in the chamber, the city, the residents, and everybody coming up with a viable option for, for downtown. And I'd like to pass it to Brian Munson, because he may have some nice things to say about this, too.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you look at other communities, as I said previously about, you know, techniques to support downtowns, it's not just as simple as plug in more retail and it will fill itself. It has to be positioned correctly, it has to be where the retailers want to be. And West Verona Avenue represents a great exposure point for retailers or service or whatever uses go in there. The other is coupling up with that open space as a destination. You, we don't have to look very far to find an example in that, you know, I worked with Sun Prairie going on, a while ago, many, many years ago, on the Canary Square Project, in designing a gathering space on the east end of their downtown and designing it in a way that allows retail to flourish along it, but doesn't compete against downtown, becomes complementary to downtown and gives destinations reason for people to come down there. So you can see in a very small space across from City Hall in downtown Sun Prairie, that square was created to be that anchor. We see this as an opportunity to do that and more, because while that was a constrained site with very limited ability to bring a large amount of open space, we're looking at two acres, which gives you that opportunity to have the farmers' markets, to have ice skating rinks and activities and destinations for residents to come downtown. Again, the idea being that by giving them destinations that they will use year-round, it gives them reasons to come down, discover downtown again if they haven't been there in a while, or to come down and frequent their favorite shops. So we see the connections flowing from this site east to downtown as strengthening the entire neighborhood around it and offering opportunities for people to go back and forth on all of those walkable streets, supporting the retail, not just on our site, but downtown as they move between the different destinations in the downtown area.
Was there anything to add on affordable housing? I believe that was also part of Alder Ryan's question.
Matt?
Yeah, I mean, I guess just to, just to add on to what's already been said, you know, we've actually been doing affordable housing since the program was started in nineteen eighty-six. And we've done thousands of units on a national basis, along with hundreds of historic buildings. Stonehouse does a great job, too, and, you know, we know them real well. Rich started at the Alexander Company years ago. So, but, you know, we've, so you had two quality companies, and we can do affordable housing where some of the best in the country. And I think it'll be great for your residents, because construction costs continue to rise, rents along with them, but incomes haven't kept up for the, for the lower-income tier. So, you know, it's, it's really important. There's a lot of people that don't have a lot of housing options, at least not a quality housing option. You know, there's older housing stock out, out there, and it's just, it's becoming obsolete. So this is really important in our minds.
Thank you. Any further questions for the developers before we get, I guess, into the debate proper? Alright, seeing no further questions, I'm gonna ask for a five-minute recess, just to give people a chance to go to the bathroom and do other stuff. And then we will come back and have our discussion. So ten oh seven PM. See you guys in a few minutes. That's everybody. Yeah, thanks, uh, thanks for bearing with the recess. We don't wanna cause bladder damage for any elected officials. Like, right, you got, if you talk a lot, you gotta drink water. But if you drink a lot of water, anyway, we are, we are back on the main topic. And we are open for questions or comments or motions. Alder Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I find myself, much like some of the rest of the Alders, in that I was really hoping that the feedback that I got from the many, many constituents who contacted me would really help sway my decision. And, not kidding, completely split down the middle, literally fifty-fifty. I think everybody recognizes that both of these proposals have really amazing aspects to them. And wouldn't it be great if we could combine them into one and make everybody happy? But that's not gonna happen. One of the things that I will say that I've heard a lot about is the issue of density. This is a newer concept for Verona. And I think the developers could all speak to, having had resistance to this in Verona. That's one of the biggest concerns I heard from constituents, that it's a lot of housing. It's needed, and I have always been very pro-high-density housing, because I do think that Verona needs it, and I think we will see more of it in the future. But I, in addition to hearing that feedback about the number of units, I was also keeping track of the number of people who made comments about the pool, either pro or con. So there were actually people who favored the McKenzie proposal, but that were also anti-pool. So one of my concerns is that, once you put in a pool, it's always gonna be a pool. It can't be anything but a pool. I also agree that what the type of pool or aquatic center that Verona wants is bigger than what this site can provide. So I hope that we, the discussion around a community pool continues to happen and that we can find a good site for it, but I don't think that this is the place for it. So there's that. The other thing is, in addition to the concerns about it not being able to be used for much of the year, you are asking a lot of one neighborhood in downtown Verona to absorb not only high-density housing, but then the traffic, the noise, everything else that goes along with a great aquatic center. So for that reason, I am leaning to support the Steve Brown proposal. But I do wanna commend both developers for putting together fantastic proposals, and I'm really, really excited about the opportunity for affordable housing, because I think Verona desperately needs it. Thank you.
Mr. Sayer, I think the, the question-and-answer portion is over. So should we send the developers back to be attendees?
We can do that, so I will start that process.
Okay, just don't wanna do it without any warning. Thank you, guys. Alder Kemp, I believe I saw your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I wanna thank both development teams. I think you guys have put together two very interesting proposals. You know, I have to echo what Alder Cronin just mentioned. Most of my emails, it was pretty well split down the middle. I think that both proposals have, you know, absolute, you know, positive points, but then there's, you know, parts that aren't as great. If I could take elements from each one and put them together, we would have probably an ideal proposal. You know, the, the thing that I think is, is intriguing to me was the idea of what to do with the, the school. You know, you look around at what's going on, the cost of, of college, the amount of student debt that people are racking up. The city of Verona isn't in the business of solving everyone's financial problems. You know, we make choices, we choose to go to college, it costs money, that's fine. But opening up other options to, to children that are coming up besides a four-year school, I think is a really good thing to do. I, I'd be in favor of that, so long as the relationship with, that partnership in the city is one that's positive and there's still more access to other members of the community, because that's a historical building. I don't want the city to lose total control of it. I wanna preserve it, as Jesse, you know, has requested. But to be, to be very honest, I think the council needs to take more time to go back and reassess and look at these plans. I think that there is, this is a decision that is very important, obviously. That land has been occupied since nineteen fifty-six. So we're coming up on seventy years of it, you know, sitting there, and we have a historic opportunity, and I don't want to rush to vote, just to vote on something. So my question, I think, there are some current concerns by the developers as to applications. And while I understand that that's, you know, in order to get a hole in the ground, you have, have to have certain timelines met. I don't think we should sacrifice, you know, this property to meet that end. So does somebody, Mr. Mayor or Adam, do you know or have you heard what the requirement or the timeline is? And is there any way we could probably vote on? And is there any way we could probably vote on this at another time if we decide to table it and still meet that deadline?
Mr. Sayer?
I believe the deadline, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it was end of June for potential affordable tax credits for some of these projects. You know, I think the potential's still there. It just means some of them won't hit that cycle for this year. They could potentially, you know, this isn't going to be a I suspect most of these projects, I think, some of them have some phasing in there, but it's not a simple build-it-all-in-one-year kind of process as well. So, I mean, there could be some potential impact to this, the application process there, and I want to say it was June, but I think to your point, though, is probably correct. I mean, it's end of the day, you want to make sure you get it right and not just be worried about one application. So it could potentially impact that, but I, end of the day, you want to make sure you get the right decision made versus worrying about that detail because they could come back and apply at a later date, too.
Right, okay. One other thing I did want to mention, too. I, I really do want to see more retail in Verona. I think that, you know, the Brown plan obviously does a better job with that. Mr. McKenzie was very straightforward in, in his approach. And he is right. I think that people are shopping differently. I, if I can help it, I don't go anywhere to shop. I use my phone. But with that being said, there, in sitting here and just thinking about how many open properties there are in Verona, there are quite a bit. And as it was previously mentioned, they are kind of disjointed. I wonder if we get an anchor or a central place that has suitable retail and commercial in the downtown, if we would find some success there because it's centered and because it's walkable. So my hope would be that, you know, if if the, if the McKenzie proposal prevails, that they find a way to do some more retail when he talks about flexibility. And then I also hope that should Brown prevail, that they are reasonable in their approach and they don't saturate that area too much. But right now, my, my thought process is, is we need to take a little bit more time to consider what we're about to do. And that's always a good thing. It's not a bad thing. I understand that there are time constraints, but I, I would propose that we take more time to, to think about it, perhaps at the next meeting.
Clarifying question for Alder Kemp. Yeah, that was my question. Are you think like a week, two weeks? You know, can we still get it done in June?
Yeah, I, I would propose that we should try and have something done in June to, to, because, look, they've both worked very hard and I respect that. I would want to try and get something taken care of, but you know, to what Adam said, you want to get it done, you know, right.
Got it. Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to reinforce what Alder Kemp said, which is that, you know, we, we shouldn't be hasty in our decision. Whatever it is we put here is going to be here for a very long time. It's going to impact the downtown area for many, many, many years to come. So I'm not interested in making a hasty decision either. To, to Alder Cronin's point around density, just a FYI or point of clarification, per data that was provided by Mr. Sayer, I believe that the density for the Lincoln Street, the recent Lincoln Street property adjacent to council was, is twenty-five, I think it's livable dwellings is the phrase, per acre. And so comparatively, compared to that, the Steve Brown density is lower at nineteen point six compared to McKenzie's twenty-six point five. So, you know, if we, if we have concerns over sort of overcrowding or density, I think Steve Brown wins in that regard. Again, to, you know, to the issue of the pool, I, I guess I want to highlight the fact that we have a brand-new high school with not one but two pools. One is a heated pool, and as I understand it, it's open to the community. In addition to that, we have the nadatorium that's been around for years. We also have the beach, Fireman's Park, and then we have the Goodman Jewish Community Center just down the road on PD. I'm not, I'm not discounting the need for pool, but I feel like we've got a number of options that are closer. I'm not even sure that, frankly, I'm not sure that people are aware of all of those options. One, the fact that there's a heated pool coming at the brand-new high school. And I'm not really entirely sure that people are aware of the Goodman Jewish Community Pool either. I, I feel like those are both good options. I do feel like the pool smack-bang downtown is not a good use of the space. I feel like it's what we're going to get is not what the community actually has in, in, in the picture in their mind for what they actually want. I think that having a pool smack-bang in the downtown area that is outdoors in Wisconsin that can only be used for three months out of the year is not a good use of that space. And I feel like having something that can be used more for seasons is a much better use of that space. And so as I sit here, I, I agree with all of the Alders. I think that the, the community votes, as it were, is pretty much fifty-fifty down the middle. I personally am leaning towards the Brown proposal for those reasons. I do, I am concerned about having a disused retail space. I personally would not want to see retail in the sense of buying things and goods. I don't think that that's how people shop. I don't think that that's the future of shopping in this country. I think that I would be much more inclined to see something like nice restaurants. Again, going back to what I feel like my mandate is in this role, I feel like people are wanting to see local business. I, I can tell you that I personally hate the idea of having another chain restaurant in this city. I hate it, and I think a lot of people hate it as well. I think that there are enough inspired people in this community who would want to start a small business and run, you know, a restaurant, a bakery, whatever that that could happen. And so on those grounds, I just, I just want to plant the seed that that's, that's the way that I'm leaning is towards the Brown development at this time. But again, I think community consultation is really important. I don't think we should make a hasty decision. As it relates to the schoolhouse itself, I do, I am completely in favor of preserving the building. I'm completely in favor of listing it, heritage listing, or whatever the phrase is, National Heritage.
Register.
Register and finding a good use. I do like, what I, what I do like about the McKenzie proposal is that he has engaged with nonprofits. I like that he's been speaking to the Boys and Girls Club about using that space. I like the idea of having, you know, a, either, either a maker, maker space, having some sort of a community center, having a children's museum, having, you know, trade school in there. I think all of those ideas are great. So I do want to see the building go forth and, and stay put. And I think, you know, whoever said Alder Kemp or whomever said having a hybrid or a, you know, cherry picking from both proposals, I think is a great idea. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Further discussion from the council? I got Alder Ricky, then Alder Touche, and then Alder Journey.
Thank you. I also heard pretty much equal support for both McKenzie and Brown's proposals. However, half or so of those who contacted me in support of the McKenzie proposal did so because they support the public pool idea. And choosing McKenzie proposal doesn't necessitate that a pool be built, so I just want to make that distinction. And, and also add to that, that I think the Brown proposal offers more flexibility with listening to the public and potentially including a pool if that's what is deemed necessary after more public input. And I also would, would like to vote tonight so that whoever's chosen can get going on applications for both the deed restriction and the National Registry for the Historic Building. I don't know what the deadlines and the the time requirements on those applications are, but I, I do want to make sure that both of those occur and you know, the sooner the better, that they can prioritize that and get those applications in and start moving forward with public input sooner rather than later.
I got Alder Touche and then Alder Journey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Honestly, you know, watching the all the meetings in preparation for this, reading the material, it's a crazy amount of information. I really appreciate Charlotte bringing up some of the differences and expectations that all of the developers have as far as how much the city contributes, if, if they're purchasing the land or getting it at no cost. And, and honestly, my, you know, so a lot of things to consider, right? Coming into this meeting, I was very much a pool proponent. I think when I saw the overlay of Middleton's pool, it really kind of highlighted the amount of space it takes. Honestly, I'm still a huge fan of a pool, but I really would rather have a vibrant area in our city. And, and I understand that roofs contribute to that, but I, I really do feel that, you know, there, there are other properties in that area that are also putting roofs in. And because this is city land, and when I see how much the, our neighbors in the cities having to pay per acre, and you know, just even for land or annexing for roadway, I mean, and, and crazy six-figure numbers per acre for land, this land in the city of Verona is very valuable. And I do not think that I know I'm not in a position to pick one or the other right now, but what I really would like to do is, as a council, whether it's a city, the whole meeting, is really kind of talk through, you know, again, take that feedback and really highlight that and then see how it fits with these proposals because honestly, in the RFP, didn't say apartments. And this, both of these proposals are like, half of them are apartments. And is this really what the city needs? This is the city's land. This isn't apartment land. This is city land, and it, does apartments have a play? For sure. Because I think we do need more people in there. We also got to remember, you know, there's another development right next door that's also putting in apartments, but no city space. So I'd rather not give up city space if we can help it. So with that said, I'm fully in favor of postponing a vote for either the next meeting or even the meeting after. Thank you.
Alder Journey?
So can the city put in the deed restriction application? It was my understanding, so that the city could at least take that action to protect that school as a historical space?
Mr. Sayer?
So what we did for the Matt's House was after we acquired it, and then after we negotiated with Troy Ross, who purchased that, as part of that kind of purchase and the closing on the, on that property for Troy, one of the requirements was to record that deed restriction. So we would do that as we kind of work with the developers and kind of work for the development process and ultimately negotiate a development agreement. It would be part of that process. Just because it's cleaner to kind of tie that all in with the overall arching documents. So that's something that we'll handle, but we'll handle that as part of the development agreement because it's just it's, it's cleaner. And then when we come back to the council, you kind of know everything that's in that agreement, which will include that deed restriction. So we'll, we'll use the same language, similar language we use with the Matt's House downtown.
Any other further questions or comments? Alder Posey?
Thank you. I guess for me, I feel like coming out of this tonight, I feel like both developers can be flexible. I do, I love, and I will tell you, I fully support the concept of a pool here in Verona. If we can figure out how to afford it and afford the ongoing maintenance of it because it's not just a one-time thing, something we have to look at for many years to come and what that means for our city. But I don't think a six- or eight-lane lap pool is it. And yes, that's what fits in this site. I think we've got to look at something. When we talk community pool, we talk little ones. We talk about older ones. We talk about everybody in the middle. And we need a facility that will meet the needs of everyone. So with that, I think for me, one of the things coming out of tonight that I would like the opportunity to look at further are the financials side. I feel like kind of now that I've got kind of this side, I can really dive deeper, kind of elbow-deep into that and looking at what this means when we start talking budget. And then, of course, looking at the retail picture, knowing that we're talking about retail going in across the street from what we're currently talking about. We're looking at it going next to it. We know that what's going down the street will all be retail. And so looking at what's kind of proposed and what this would mean and what look like as a holistic picture. I'd like that opportunity to do that, so especially on the financial side. I feel like that's something I need a little bit more time to digest.
Mr. Sayer, would you be able to prepare, or perhaps Brian could prepare a kind of a, a financial breakdown of the two projects for the next, the next meeting?
Sure, we could do, we could do some of that.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Alder Kemp?
I was going to make a motion. Do we need a motion to a table or no?
I don't, Mr. Sayer is saying he wants one. I don't think we need one.
It's clean.
I, I would, I would, I guess, like to potentially create the expectation of when we'll make a decision. So I want to be, I want to be fair to the public and the developers. And, you know, so like, I, I, I I mean, I guess I was ready to decide tonight, but I think I've heard at least four Alders say they want more time, so that means we need more time. And so I, I guess, I mean, I, I would hope we'd be ready to commit by the, the, the next meeting this month.
Yeah, that was, that was my intention.
Okay.
Again, we don't have to rush this. So I just, I'm like, and this is a permanent decision for the city. And as much as it's convenient for developers, waiting a year isn't gonna be the end of the world here. So let's just do it right.
Okay, I, I think Alder Kemp, were you going to make a motion or?
Yeah. I can do that now. I'd like to make a motion to table the discussion on the development of the Sugar Creek property until the next council meeting, which is scheduled. What's the date?
Twenty-second, I believe?
June twenty-second.
June twenty-second?
Second.
Motion by Alder Kemp, second by Alder Touche. This is a debatable motion. So I'm going to throw my two cents in about the, the two developments. I think, like I said, I was ready to decide tonight. However, I think it's clear from the body that people want more time. And I think, you know, as other people have pointed out, we, we, this is a really big decision. And so we want to make sure we get it right. I, I want to thank the members of the public who've reached out to me. I've heard, heard from a ton of people on, on both sides. I think, I think, I want to thank the developers, too, for putting together two really good proposals. I think ultimately the city could work, work with either one. I still favor the Steve Brown one because ultimately I think it gets us closer to a walkable downtown. I think, I think the problem, oh man, I, I don't want to start talking about Verona's downtown because I feel like I could, you know, I'll be talking till midnight. But I feel like some of our issues, we need to generally activate, like an area. I feel like we have anchors in our downtown in the sense of like the Hop House, Millers, the coffee shops, Toot and Kate's. But I feel like we haven't quite established a district where people might go from shop to shop. And I feel like Steve Brown's proposal offers us the best chance to do that. I think as other people have said, some of the proposals around the pool, it might not quite get to what the public expects. And the McKenzie proposal, I will say, I really like, you know, an option to train people in the trades. I think that, like, yeah, construction is a growth industry and there's always going to be need for skilled tradespeople. I think we should be as versatile as possible in our employment base. So that's kind of where I'm at. And, and I totally understand Alder Touche's comments about, you know, this is going to be a long-term decision. But I also think that, you know, the polls aren't going to change too much, and I think it could be useful in, in the sense to kind of keep it moving and, and work with the developer. Because even once we do pick one or the other developer, it's going to be months of negotiation to get it to a point, so. So there is going to be a long process, and there'll be chance from our public input and things like that. But anyway, motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Alder Ryan.
I just want to make a comment. So it is now ten thirty-five PM, and there are forty-nine participants on this call. And what I want to say to the forty-nine participants is that if you're on the call at ten thirty-five PM on a Monday night, you obviously give a damn. That is good. Thank you. And also, I feel like you're fixing to get two weeks here to continue to comment and to get your voice heard, and also to get people that you know who have an interest in this to have their input. And so please, you know, if here in a second, we're gonna vote to table this for two weeks, please, 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 get people to contact their alderman. You can find our email addresses at the city website and contact us and have your voice heard, because this is a twelve-acre parcel in the center of a downtown city, which does not come along every day. And whatever decision that your alders make is gonna have a lasting impact, right? So get involved, get your people involved, and have your voice heard. Thanks.
And there's at least ten people watching on the city's YouTube channel as well on the live stream. So if you don't like Zoom, you can always watch us on YouTube as well. Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion. I will do this by voice vote unless there's confusion, and then I will ask for a roll call vote. But all those in favor of Alder Kemp's motion to table until the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
And that motion carries seven to one with Alder Cronin voting against. With that, we will move on to item ten, new business. Under ten A, we have a discussion on possible action regarding the payment of the bills. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion for the payment of the bills, an amount of, and I hope I'm seeing this right, this is what I got from Brian, but ninety-nine thousand, seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
Mr. Sayre, is that correct?
Correct.
You cut out the first, was it, would you say ninety-five?
Ninety-nine thousand, seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
That's correct.
Okay.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin. Alder Kemp.
Yes, just for the sake of discussion, obviously not, not much this month in the, in the amount of payment on the bills. We do have a payment of fourteen thousand, one hundred and six dollars and fifty-seven cents for well six to eighty com technical services. We have a payment to Virchow, Baker-Tilly Virchow Kraus for the two thousand nineteen audit in the amount of five thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. There's also payments of, to Glacier Landscape for annual painting in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. And a payment of, for our May inspections in the amount of six thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no discussion on that matter? All those in favor of paying the amount, paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? The motion carries. Next up, we'll move on to ten B, a discussion on possible action regarding the creation of a sustainability committee. Did you want to give us a brief summary, Mr. Sayre?
Yes. In April of twenty nineteen, the city adopted a sustainability resolution to help focus sustainability efforts in the city. While the city continues to direct sustainable efforts to be consistent with the adopted resolution, other communities in Dane County have sustainability committees or task forces, forces, and dedicated staff to run these committees. Staff is requesting feedback and direction from the council on the creation of a sustainability committee or a task force. If directed to create a committee or task force, staff will bring ideas to the council at a future meeting. So the intent of this tonight is to see if there's any interest in creating this, and then provide staff with some direction of kind of what you want, if you want something created.
And just if I can add on to that, you know, my, my traditional thought has been, I think it's better to fully integrate sustainability efforts into what the city's doing in general. However, I've consistently heard from members of public that they're interested in it, and, you know, I, I mean, I want to be responsive to people, and if there's a lot of interest, I don't want to be out here damping down enthusiasm on the, on the subject either. So Alder Cole.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think I proposed this a couple of years ago, because I'd also been hearing that, you know, people wanted this, and it's something I wanted too. I believe, I know that, I, I agree with you that it's important to, you know, that these ideas permeate all the other committees and whatever, but I really think we can have a more focused effort if we have a committee that's made up of, you know, community members, they can have their input as well. I think, you know, the more voices relating to, you know, environmentalism and sustainability, and what we can do as a community, the better. The people out there have great ideas, and sometimes it's not easy for them to, you know, funnel things through their alders or, you know, that way. And I think if we had a committee made up, you know, of community members and alders and whatever, you know, kind of like the CDA, I think that would be really good to have a focused effort and really making our city as green as we can. Thank you.
Other comments from the council? Alder Touche.
As, as an individual sits in way too many meetings, I just, how, how would this committee integrate with what we're doing? And if I were to be a member, and I always try to put myself in other people's shoes, what what kind of agenda topics, and how would my input provide value in whatever the city's doing? I mean, would, would it be a committee that would just meet, think of some great ideas, and then present them to the council? Is, I mean, how is this going to function and fit with the rest of the city? And just to be clear, I completely agree. Citizen involvement and interest is fantastic. How I got involved in the council myself. And so I'm just like, I'd hate for this committee to be formed, and then just have them spin their wheels and wonder what value they're providing. Thank you.
Mr. Sayre, do you want to, I mean, we could talk about different ways. I mean, some of it will depend on how the council decides to formulate the committee or the task force or anything.
Yeah, I mean, Middleton, so Middleton has, they have a committee that has one alderperson, nine, nine citizen members on it, three that possess expertise in one or more areas of sustainability. They offer policy recommendations to the council. They offer education seminars and events. They meet one time a month. They have topics that include sustainability goals, lead for city grant applications, con-plan ideas, Matty Sun, which is a solar project that Madison, there's a company Madison pushing. So that's an option. So some prairie just created a task force. It's brand, brand new. They haven't really done much, but they have a task force. Manona has one with seven members. They meet once per month. They talk about rain garden, garden, sustainable business surveys, toolkits, renewable energies. Fitchburg has a Green Fitchburg Committee that was created with their Resource Conservation Commission, recommends policy enforcement information programs. Madison has a sixteen-member committee. I wouldn't recommend that. That's too big. And then Stoughton actually has a five oh one C three nonprofit that's called Sustainable Stoughton. And that's a group of citizens that looks at current city development issues, and they talk about sustainability efforts publicly. So it's a pretty wide gamut of kind of what you want to look at. Some of it's policy-driven. Some of the stuff from more of a holistic planning standpoint could be put into the comprehensive plan when that's rewritten in a couple of years as well. So that's an opportunity too, but it really depends on what you want to make of it.
Alder Ryan, then Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to Alder Touche's point around, you know, do we have just a group of individuals who are sitting around a room thinking of great ideas that don't go anywhere? I think it's super important that we use our actual voices, our digital voices, right? We're all on social media. We are alders. We, we have leadership roles in this community that we use those to amplify the cause. I'm a hundred percent behind the idea. And I think we just have to be more clever about what we're doing, how we're doing it. It's, yes, we need to have meetings. I agree with Mr. Sayre. We don't need a, a committee of sixteen or whatever it was. It needs to be pretty tight, but I think that generating the ideas and getting them out there in the community and generating support. And, you know, when people become vocal and become engaged, then things happen and get, and get done. And so I'm entirely in favor of this.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in mind that may be a, a, a great candidate for chairing this committee that already kind of has some of these ideas and is well organized, and it sounds like lots of potential to assist the city in these ways?
I don't have anyone off the top of my head, but I think, I, I, from the interest that I've had expressed to me, I think we would be able to find members for it.
All right, I'm in support. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Mr. Sayre, would you want to motion on this, or do you feel like you have potential direction from the council?
I think we have enough direction. I guess the one comment I'll just make is, from a staffing level standpoint, I just remind everybody, we're still short-staffed in the planning department. So I just, if we create this, I think we have to be realistic on current staff expectations and staff loads, because until we get that position filled, which most likely won't be until next year because of budget savings we're trying to do right now, we just need to be realistic on staff workloads, if it's our committee. So just not say it can't be done. I'm just saying there are some staffing challenges right now. You know, for example, Fitchburg, and Middleton, and Madison all have dedicated staff, strictly this is what they do. So we can put some ideas together, but it may not be as big as what Middleton has done, just because we don't have the staff right now to really pull off what they do.
Further questions or comments on this issue? Seeing no further discussion. City staff will get us some suggestions and ideas and bring them back, and we'll see where we can proceed from there. Next up, we will move on to ten C, which is a discussion on possible action regarding a lease agreement between the city of Verona and Redeemer Bible Fellowship Church. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. The original lease signed with the church was signed in twenty fourteen. The Redeemer Bible Fellowship Church located at one thirty North Franklin Street is proposing to create a third addendum to this lease extending their term until September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. The two-year extension includes an increase in the lease rate from four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars per month to five thousand dollars per month. Staff recommends approval of lease agreement between the city and Redeemer Bible Fellowship Church. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Questions, comments, or motions? Alder Cronin.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the lease agreement between the city of Verona and the Redeemer Bible Fellowship Church.
Motion by Alder Cronin, is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Cronin?
No, thank you.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to approve the lease agreement? Seeing no, no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the lease agreement between the city of Verona and Redeemer Bible Fellowship Church, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? That motion passes. Next up, we'll move to ten D, which is a discussion on possible action regarding ordinance number two zero dash nine six six, amending title seven, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, concerning operator licenses. Clerk Clark.
Sure, thank you. So last fall, on the Legislature passed Wisconsin Act one sixty-six, which allows a municipal governing body to delegate authority to issue operators' licenses to a designated, a designated municipal official, which means that the governing body would no longer have to approve operator licenses at the end of their meeting. So this ordinance, this particular ordinance delegates that authority to the city clerk or his or her designee. The police department would continue to conduct investigations of the applicants, and the chief of police would recommend approval or denial of the applications. If there is a denial by the chief of police, that would still then go to the common council. Upon approval, the city clerk or his or her designee will issue the operator's license. So I just need a motion if you approve, or if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments, or motions? I mean, if I may, this will streamline things and make it faster for the council, right? I mean, that's the bottom line.
Absolutely, yeah. Across the board.
All in favor of that. Alder Ricky, then Alder Touche.
I was just gonna make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty dash nine six six, amending title seven, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, concerning operators' licenses.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second by Alder Touche? Anything to add, Alder Ricky?
No.
Alder Touche.
Nope, I was all for the motion.
Motion before the body. Questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of ordinance number two zero dash nine six six, amending title seven, chapter two of the Code of Ordinances, City of Verona, concerning operator licenses, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? That motion passes. Next, we'll move on to ten E, which is a discussion on possible action regarding the designation of alternate locations and the extended hours for requesting and voting absentee ballots for the August eleventh, twenty twenty partisan primary and the November third, twenty twenty general election. Clerk Clark.
Sure, thank you. So as we did this spring for the February and April elections, again, the common council is required to approve alternate locations for requesting and voting absentee ballots. So staff is requesting approval from the council to designate the Verona Public Library and the Senior Center, Senior Citizen Center as alternate absentee voting locations, and to request informal approval of extended absentee voting hours. Because of the COVID nineteen, we're not sure how that's all going to work out, so we don't have specific hours to list tonight. Or if we will even be able to have hours at, at the library or at the senior center. But in case we are able to, we do need that approval from the council, please.
Alder Touche.
I move approval, simply.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, I think. Anything to add, Alder Touche?
I think it's a great idea. The easier we can make it for people to vote, the better.
Yeah, just like what Alder Touche said, I think we should make it as easy and convenient as possible for our citizens to exercise their right to vote. Motion before the body. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the designation of alternate locations and extended hours for requesting and voting absentee ballots for the August eleventh, twenty twenty partisan primary and the November third, twenty twenty general election, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes. Next, we'll move on to ten F, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the George Floyd incident. A word of explanation for myself. Typically, in a lot of situations, I haven't, with national, international issues, I've generally, I'll have a lot of opinions on things. I've generally avoided wanting the, the city of Verona to weigh in on them. My position has always been, you know, like, you know, the US Congress doesn't care what we think. The government of Minnesota doesn't care what we think. You know, I mean, we have enough trouble getting the state legislature to care what we think, and we're in, in Wisconsin. You know, on the other hand, you know, this is a situation that a lot of people in the community feel strongly with. There's a lot, been a lot of statements made in general. I mean, even Ben and Jerry's Ice Cream made a statement. And I feel like, on some level, not saying anything starts to feel like a statement too. And so I just wanted to kind of open it up for general discussion. People can make comments. Tonight, we could direct city staff, and I would, I would be more than happy to help write a resolution. Or we could potentially make a motion on it tonight, but I think, you know, with everything that's happened, and, and from the feedback I've heard in the community, I think, I think we need to talk about it and bring up with it. So I'd be, I would be open. I would be open to hear your thoughts. Alder Journey, then Alder Ryan?
So I came out of my cave this morning and took a walk downtown and saw Black Lives Matter signs by the flags, and I was very happy to see that. And then also that there is a walk that is scheduled next week, I think. So I would support any statement coming out of the city of Verona in support.
Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to me, silence is complicit. Pride is complicity, and it's unacceptable to me. I think that we need to send a message to the people of color who live in Verona, albeit a small community, that we give a damn, that we care about you, that we want you to feel comfortable living here, being here. And, you know, as much as as this has been ignited by George Floyd in Minnesota several hours from here, this sort of stuff goes on every day of the week all across this country. And I think it's extremely important that this, that the people in this city know that their leaders in council stand behind them, give a damn about them, want them to feel safe, want them to feel comfortable. That includes our students at the high school. That includes everyone who lives in here. That includes, you know, the and and by the way, the students who who are forced to attend our high school are not even necessarily residents of Verona, right? There are people who live at New Fountain Apartments, at Allied Drive in Fitchburg. Those are our people too, in my mind. And so what I would like to do tonight is to have a resolution that says that your city council cares about you, that we grieve with the family of George Floyd, that we grieve with the family of all of those who have been killed at the hands of excessive use of force by police. And that we find that unacceptable, that we would not tolerate that here in this city, that we stand with our brothers and sisters of color and that we want you to be here, that we welcome you being here. You belong here. So, thank you.
Alder Cole?
I want to agree with what Alder Ryan said as far as silence is complicit, and I think that now more than ever, it's time for Verona to stand up and say Black Lives Matter. You know, in our community and everywhere. And adding to that, I I kind of wanted to amplify a voice of a a black author, Ibram X. Kendi, who said, I mean, he talks about anti-racism, and I think we have an opportunity to not just be not racist, but to be anti-racist. And what he says is, what's the problem with being not racist? It it is a claim that signifies neutrality. I am not a racist, but neither am I aggressively against racism. But there is no neutrality in the racism struggle. The opposite of racist isn't not racist, it's anti-racist. And another thing he says is, one either believes problems are rooted in groups of people as a racist, or locates the roots of problems and power and policies as an anti-racist. And to that end, I think we have an obligation as a city, as alders, as leaders in this community, to really look at our policies and make them as anti-racist as possible. Like Alder Ryan said, the, you know, the black members of our community deserve to have allies in their government that are going to work for them and make them as safe and comfortable and welcome as possible here. So I, I believe we do need to put a statement out, and I do believe we need to really start looking at our policies, and I'm committed to do that.
Other comments or motions, Alder Cronin?
Um, I would just like to say that I'm also in favor of the city of Verona issuing a statement about what happened to to George Floyd and that we stand in opposition of police brutality ending people's lives. We, and I'm, I'll speak for myself. As a white person, I carry privilege to be able to look away and to not have to make statements. And I think that time is over. I think we need to make concrete statements that show that this is where we stand in Verona, and we want to make a safe community for everyone who lives here.
Other questions or comments or motions, Alder Kemp?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I I just want to make a quick comment. You know, I've basically grown up in Verona, and I've always felt welcome here. You know, everybody knows this. I went to school here K through twelve. My kids go to school here. I don't plan on leaving anytime soon. You know, I think this is a time for a personal reflection. It's one thing to to put out a statement, and those things are good. And I think people need to see that. But one thing I would, you know, strongly encourage everyone to do now more than more than ever is to not only stand behind, you know, a political statement or phrase, but really think about and reflect on what's in their own heart. And just ask, you know, on a day-to-day basis, what you can do to make someone else's life better, regardless of the situation. Right now, this is what everyone's talking about. You know, a couple of months from now, it could be something else. And I think the the key thing that we're, we are lacking right now in this country, given the current situation that we're in, is just this lack of empathy. And so if people did that every day and just said, what is it like to be in someone else's shoes, and just took the time to think like that? We would all be much better off. So that's what I would encourage, you know, the people that are still watching this, just, just think about that. First, I'm encouraged by a lot of people taking notice to a lot of the injustices that have been ongoing for now hundreds of years. But when you want to know what it is, you can do. I'm telling you, think about what it's like to walk in someone else's shoes. That's a difficult thing to do. It's not an easy ask. But it's something that I try and do, and I'm not perfect either. But we could start there. That would be great. So I'm in favor of of any resolution supporting that. But along with that, I'd like everyone else to challenge themselves to do a little more than that.
Alder Posing?
Yeah, um, for me, I think making the statement is an important thing, and I think that's something that for myself personally has. I'm not necessarily a speak out loud all the time person. I'm more of a doer. And honestly, Nat's comments at the opening of our conversation today made it really I don't know, outright that it's important to make the statement because by not making the statement, as everyone has said, it's being complicit. I do think with that also said that we need to have some sort of follow-up. We can't just make the statement. And for me personally, that's really important. Making the statements, one thing, but following it up so that in six months, it's not just, oh, well, we put out our statement and it's done. No, we need to have some teeth behind it or something that we are doing, looking at policies, like Alder Cole said. Something, but I I I mean, I know that as a community, we are welcoming, and so there's a lot that we've established there. You know, having Chief Coughlin on earlier was really important. And hearing from him and about our police force and the efforts that we have put into place. But again, as always, there's ongoing efforts that need to be made. So I just want to make sure that we don't just make our big statement and then it's left. And then in six months, we haven't done anything further. So as we're discussing things, we need to also know what our next steps would be. And I don't know that we have that answer tonight. So maybe tonight's just our commitment to make the statement and then to continue to follow up and make sure we have agenda items in the future.
Alder Ricky?
Yeah, I also think that I'm trying to reduce and, you know, hopefully ever someday eliminate racism. We need to do that introspection, and there are so many opportunities for that that I've partaken in over the last twenty years since I've been an educator. And you can just Google search, for example, Robin DiAngelo, who is a white woman who who wrote a book called White Fragility, and she puts out five suggestions for what to do right now to counteract racism and bias. And they're all introspective, individual acts that people need to just decide to do. And I want to put resources and money where my mouth is in in this position of power as other people have talked about. So that perhaps all city staff, including the PD, can get trained in anti-bias or just attend, for example, Richard Davis's Institutes for the Healing of Racism. I I think I went to that four different times and you know, could have become a co-co facilitator, but I just, you know, in, you need the push to be to be to become to realize the benefits of becoming an ally and that it really benefits everybody. And I think just, yeah, being silent is easy for white people. And I think as elected officials, we're in a position where we can maybe make it possible for city staff at least to no longer be silent, but to get educated more and and listen and develop their own identity. Research their own identity and be able to contribute to ending racism.
Um, I think Alder Tuchet, and then I think Alder Ryan.
Ah, I thought I'd be the last one. Um, yeah, you know, let me just start what I've heard here at the council's fantastic. It the 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 challenges that we face in society of of unintentional bias and the you know, as as someone who is white and and obviously experienced white privilege to some extent, or to a large extent, probably, it it's hard for me to relate to everybody. And and I really appreciate Alder Kemp's comments about being in other people's shoes. I think that's really important for people to think about what it's someone else's position and recognize that their motivations are the same as yours, and you're better off helping each other out than trying to get ahead of somebody. And I'm in full support of the of the George Floyd thing, and I even think of the Almond Aubrey situation, and it just really, you know, breaks my heart how much hate there is and and whatever we can do as a council, as a city, to reduce the hate. I think that's really important. So, thank you.
Alder Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to touch on Alder Ricky's point. She mentioned the publication White Fragility. I I'm a friend of someone on the Sherwood Hills Village Council. She's a trustee who apparently they just voted or decided amongst themselves that all of the members of the board would take up the book and sort of have a bit of a book club, I guess, if you will, amongst the council to read White Fragility, and I would be fully in support of that, too. I think it would be interesting for us. I think there's, you know, a few of us, Mr. Mayor, you were there as well yesterday, were at an event here in Verona where we talked about you know, the 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 events that happened in Minnesota, and I talked a little bit about our blind spots. I think I I certainly have blind spots. I think we all do. I think reading a publication like that would be a introspective activity, so I would be in support of that. But again, would like to make a motion, I think, to you know, make a make a statement from this council regarding our support of our, the community here in Verona, the black community and people of color in our community.
To clarify, did you intend for that to be the motion or or I just want, I just want to make sure, like, if there's a motion, you know, we can, we could either direct staff to make one or someone to feel is is feeling like, I feel like people came really close to actually signing it. Would have been a fine motion several alders. So I mean, we can make a motion tonight. We could, we could, however, however people want to do it.
Well, this will be my first attempt to make it an emotion. So I I will make a motion that we have a referendum that says that
Wait, 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 a referendum's
Sorry, that we that we make a statement that says
Resolution?
A resolution that says that the city of Verona supports, you know, our African-American brothers and sisters, and that we condemn excessive use of force by police in our community. And words to that effect. So I think if we can craft something that addresses our support would be good.
Mr. Sayre, did you, were you able to write something down on that or?
Uh, you're looking for staff to do this, or is this going to be led by all the person Ryan or you, Mayor Diaz?
Were you, were you intending to make the motion tonight, Alder Ryan?
I'm, I'm happy to make that motion. I'm happy to lead that initiative.
Okay. So I guess what you previously said was that your motion, or are you thinking we'll make a motion at the next council meeting, or is we'll make it tonight and then vote on it?
If we can make it tonight and vote on it, that would be great.
Okay. Does someone want to make a motion? Like I said, I thought what you had said, Alder Ryan, or perhaps what Alder Cole had said, we're we're pretty close to to what we'd want. So I mean, is, would you want to take a crack at it right now?
I can. Yep. So you want the statement now?
Yeah, so it'd be like, I move that we adopt the resolution, and then you would kind of say what you're gonna say.
Phrases. Okay, so I move that we adopt the resolution that the city of Verona condemns excessive use of force towards primarily people of color, that we stand with our African-American brothers and sisters and other people of color in our community and welcome and support them here in Verona.
Mr. Sayre, were you able to get that done?
I'm pretty close. I think if you want to approve it tonight, if you take it back, probably at the next meeting, you can finalize and formalize it. We can, we can draft it up and then take that approach. That might be a little better, too, because it's actually a formalized resolution.
Um, I I guess how are people feeling? Should we do it, do it tonight or or do it in two weeks?
Tonight.
Okay, so I got one. Alder Cole?
I was gonna say, we could, I mean, I would like to get something out soon, but putting Alder Ryan on the spot to create a statement immediately seems a little unfair. It's eleven fifteen at night. We're all really tired. I think we could wordsmith something a little bit better. I mean, what he said, like, I like, you know, like
It's the gist.
Idea of what he said, but I, I mean, I think if it wasn't eleven fifteen at night, we're trying to come up with something right on the spot. I don't think it's appropriate to come up with something right on the spot.
Okay. I think the structure is there, and I think we can build off that structure.
Yep.
Okay, so then the consensus of the body would be to have staff draft something based on Alder Ryan's comments, and we will vote on it in two weeks. Does that sound, is that what everyone wants? Okay.
Good job, Alder Ryan.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you. Sorry. Sorry for putting you on the spot. Yeah, I, I, if I can just, yeah, throw one thing in there. Yeah, I'm I'm really glad to see the the people in the community who care, the people who who are are trying to show empathy. I thought Alder Kemp's, you know, uh, advice to show empathy. It is, it is really hard, but also very well said, and it's something I think, I think we all need to do, and I don't think. Like I said, I I I tend to be someone who's cynical about elected officials and that, you know, the fact that I was elected didn't change any of that, and I don't think anyone's intending to be performative, but I think you know, we we shouldn't just do this and then think we're done. You know, it's it's a step in a, in a, in kind of a long process. And I feel like, you know, this is just one thing. And then, you know, during the budget, during next year, when we talk about policies, we should try to be as fair to 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 everyone, you know, people who are different than us and 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 to everyone, you know, people who are different than us, and you know, just kind of try to do our part to make the world a better place. But, yeah, like I said, I was very happy to see how much people in the community care, and I'm very happy to see how much all of you care as well. Any further discussion? Seeing none? We will address that at the next meeting, and we will move on to item ten G, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the approval of operator's licenses for two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one and the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two licensing periods. Clerk Clark?
Thank you. So the renewals are up July first for operator's licenses, and because ordinances are not official until they're published in the newspaper, we'll have to have one more vote on the operator's licenses. So I would need, please, a motion to approve the operator licenses for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two licensing periods.
So moved as presented?
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole? All those in favor of approving the operator licenses for the two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two licensing period? Say aye. Oppose, no? And that motion passes. We're on item eleven, adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move to adjourn.
Second by Alder Touche. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Oppose, no? And we are adjourned at eleven sixteen PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.